Okay, we're gonna call to order the regular city council meeting of April 10th, 2023. Madam Clerk, the rule please.
Vixen?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, welcome, everybody, on this first beautiful spring day, I would say. So, first, we have public comments scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. And if the council is okay with it, we're gonna move the principal shopping district first and the DDA second. But I want to have Nick wanted to kind of introduce what we're gonna be doing tonight, what the expectation is.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Evening, Council and members of our audience here. So, tonight, it's, we kind of got out of our rhythm over the years of having time to talk about some of these different budgets, like the historical commission, the City Beautiful, DDA, PSD. So, really, tonight, there's a lot of information. You don't see the numbers. That's not what we're here for tonight. So, the way we want it to work is, we review what each of the chairman are gonna talk about. This is the projects that their boards have thought is important to them for the next year, and that's their kind of goals and objectives. They're bringing it back here for discussion with council. If there's anything that our council's concerned with or wants to tweak or add, then they'll take that back to their boards, then come back, sit with Anthony and Marcy, push the numbers together, and then present it back to you. So, we're not asking for a decision on numbers. We're not approving their budgets tonight. We're simply, this is our, taken in our place of our Saturday meetings that we used to have when everybody would come in and speak and try to sell their product, if you will. So, that's kind of what we're expecting tonight. I think we're gonna start with Kevin Stewart from the PSD, Mayor, and we're good to go.
So, we'll have Kevin come on up, Christie come on up.
I'm just setting up the presentation.
And I just, so, welcome to the PSD, and I just want to notice that, note that Council Member Gould is our PSD representative on that board as well.
How's it going, everybody?
Right, you're good.
Well, we're gonna start with me because I'm more fun.
Yes.
Sorry, Ben.
Dumber guy.
I love you. It's just, what we do is really fun.
It starts already.
No, we, we, we love getting the chance to work together with you guys, as well as everybody at DDA and everything that's happening in town, and we're really excited about some of the things that we're doing and what we've been doing the last couple of years. It's been challenging, and we'll say fun at times, but also difficult at times because we've been really trying to do what we can to add to what's been done for years, but without spending any money. You're gonna see a lot of the theme that you're gonna see in some of the things that we're doing right now. Really, we're trying to make an effort to not spend any extra budget dollars. We want to make sure we're being extremely fiscally responsible, adding great enjoyment to the people that come to the city, and adding on and bringing things to the businesses in order to continue to grow what we're doing. So, a couple of things that I wanted to point on, there are some of the new things. The first one here is our Makers Market. So, this is a combination of two events that we've actually had. We, we let go of Junk in the Trunk. That was an event we've had for a while in the last, what'd you say, two years, maybe? We really haven't had the feel to the event that we were hoping for, to say it politely. It just hasn't really felt like a great event that really was progressing down a path of wanting us to keep it, but more something that needed to be rethought and reinvented. Same thing with our Thursday night market. Especially last year, I think we really saw things dwindle backwards. We weren't really getting the reception that we were hoping for. So, what we did is, we decided to bring this into what's called the Makers Market. So, the idea of this, you can see handmade goods, is kind of a combination of the two. Really more what we wanted out of Junk in the Trunk. The idea wasn't to bring your junk and sell it to people. It wasn't a garage sale idea. It was the idea to bring goods that you could sell out of your trunk, right?
Oh, we didn't know that.
Cool, fun, neat trinkets. Think of it like farmer's market for fun items.
Okay.
Like we've done in some of our markets before. That was the idea and vision of it. It just didn't work. It didn't land on that. It started to shift more towards literal junk in the trunk. So, we decided to back off of that and combine that with our Thursday market to a one-night, correct, one-night event for our Makers Market. That is going to be June 24th. So, we have that doctored for June 24th. It's gonna be off of 4th Street. So, a really good location. We're gonna have the street shut down for that evening. Christie, how many vendors do we have?
So, we're searching, we have space for 40 vendors. It's jury, so we are taking applications now.
So, we're working on filling that up, but we think this is gonna be a good replacement for two events to kind of centralize really what we're trying to do. And the idea is just to bring other small vendors inside town that can have the opportunity to sell their products, but have it be something that's usable for, for individuals coming downtown and be an add-on. Give people a reason to come down for one night and hopefully spend money in some of our other local shops and spend time in our restaurants and go out and have a good evening. So, that's the idea. We're consolidating those two events into one, therefore being a little bit more responsible with what we're doing and the time. We're wanting to make sure that we're constantly looking at events, not just to rehash them and do them over and over and over again, but find ways to make them a little better. And if we can't make them better, we decide to pull them back and reinvent them, and that's what we're doing here. So, I'm pretty excited. We're excited to see this one go through. I think it's gonna be a fun way for us to kind of start out the summer. Not completely start it out, but a good little kickoff to the summertime. Next, we have Taste of Fall. Again, we're combining two events here. So, you guys, the mural tour, if, did anybody get a chance to walk around last year and do that?
Of course.
Really good. I think that's been a fun event. I think people have enjoyed that. Taste of Fall was another one that we've been doing for a couple of years. We're just combining the timelines. We're looking at it, and those timelines didn't run parallel. And so, what we're doing is, we're doing that timeline now from Labor Day through mid-October. So, we're gonna run these two events simultaneously. And the idea is, come down, enjoy the Taste of Fall, go around and see a couple murals, right? So, trying to get people down at the same time, along the same timeline to parallel two events again. We think it's a good way to, you know, kind of continue what we're trying to do on PSD, which is just to rethink events and have them be moving across different, different sections. We want them to support not just the, you know, the businesses in town, but the restaurants. So, anytime we can try to parallel those two together, we're trying to keep conscious of doing that. So, Taste of Fall is a pretty exciting one that we're gonna do in running these two events together. We've got here the Downtown Cookie Show. Did anybody participate in this last year?
Sold out.
Yes, we did. We did, and it sold out very fast. So, needless to say, we kept that. We're continuing with the same number of tins. We're doing 150 tins again this year. This is a fun event because it is cash flow positive. We actually, we are able to increase and push money towards our budget through this event. So, it's of zero cost to the people in downtown. It's a, it's a self-funded event, and it's one that I think could be potentially expanded on or, or continued to work on as time progresses. OPC is sponsoring it with us this year for the second time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Third time, third time OPC is doing it with us, and from what I'm told by them, they really, really, really like doing it.
Thank you.
So, it's a fun way for us to connect with OPC, yes.
If it's sold out so many times so quickly, are we limited to the 150 tins, or can we grow it? Because I know I tried to sign up, and it was 10:05, and you were sold out.
Yes. So, the first year, we had 100 tins, and we sold out in eight minutes. So, then we thought we'd had your bets and go for 150, and we sold out in five minutes. So, it makes no sense. But what we talked to the merchants, because they're the ones that are actually seeing all the people, and they feel strongly that 150 is pretty much their top end of as many people as they can see in that time period. It also happens to be Kringle Weekend. We've talked about shifting it, moving it, but it just, everything seems to keep lining up for that first weekend. So, we have considered that, but if we were gonna do that, we'd probably have to reimagine the event a little bit further. Possibly have two separate tracks, and it gets a little bit more complex, and then you get to the point of how much is too much. So, we're sticking with the 150 this year, and fingers crossed, get on early.
Yeah, we're gonna give it a second year with this, but I agree. I think there is a way potentially we could expand upon it. If anybody here has any ideas along the way, we're open to that. We love ideas. We love great ideas. Councilmember Gould can obviously bring those to us. He's been great working with us and helping present ideas across the board from you guys. So, we'd love to have some ideas if you can think of some ways to.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Juan, is there a way that you could then work with the Royal Park and see if they can bring back the gingerbread?
What?
Well, I did, I did, well, I did speak to the Royal Park. That's why I'm curious.
So, the Royal Park, the gingerbread, this pastry chef who actually engineered the gingerbread has left the hotel since COVID. The original gingerbread, they used to save it each year and then rehab it. They had an incident with Egyptian beetles.
Oh.
There's, there's no more train. So, yeah.
Oh.
So, literally, we cannot, they just don't have it to put back out. We, we're actually, their new sales and marketing person is starting next week, and so, once he gets settled, my team and I are gonna be meeting with him to talk about it. So, I'm certainly happy to inquire, but it was a lot of work. They would be working on it about six months out of the year, and without Mark Sluster there to champion it, I think it might be challenging. But they had moved away from gingerbread a couple of years ago just because they felt like it had run its course and were trying some new things. So, I'll be interested to see what they have in store this year, but I'll certainly inquire about the gingerbread and report back. But unfortunately, gingerbread does not exist. It was eaten by Egyptian beetles.
That's, that's fine. They just were excited about it when I spoke to them.
Keep in mind, one of the things that we try to do as well is, we want to do things that are gonna help and enhance businesses. We don't ever want to be a hindrance. So, part of what we try to do is, we try to listen. And I think what Christie was touching on is the businesses, the, the, some of the feedback we have got is that they feel 150 people's a pretty good number. Now, if we can get some feedback from the business owners in town that say, hey, we can handle more people, maybe we can expand it to another night or, or do a couple different versions of it. So, there's some ways, I think, to expand it, but we also don't want to expand it just for the sake of expanding it and therefore overwhelm the businesses because now we've kind of misplaced our mission in supporting the businesses downtown. So, any other questions on that?
Thank you.
Awesome. Snowman stroll. I really, really enjoyed this last year. I walked around a lot, not as much as Christie did because she had maintenance issues, but I walked around a ton, and I know the amount of feedback I personally received from the snowman stroll was incredibly positive. Again, this is not a, this one isn't a cash positive event, but it is a break even. This is a cash wash. We're able to cover all of the money spent for the snowman stroll with businesses and people who are coming in and donating money in order to have their name on a snowman. So, we are going back and doing this again. There's gonna be 12 snowmen on the street. We have a contract to do so. We're already working on, I don't know if we've completely lined them up or close on the artists, I believe.
The registration opens for applications in July. So, we're gonna have some people already.
Yep. So, we will probably fill up with this very quickly. We did increase the price because we had some increased costs. We are gonna create a little bit more rules around it this year, though. We had, we had some issues last year with noses especially. How many times did you replace the carrot?
Too many.
Yep. So, lots of carrots were replaced. There was a lot of, we'll call it, extra things that were put on a lot of the snowmen that unfortunately were just damaged. Late night nonsense happens. We, we can't get around that. It's, it is what it is. We have to understand that. And so, we're, we're working with the artists this year to try to give them some more creative parameters to avoid that because what we don't want this to do is also be a nuisance on Christie and her staff because unfortunately, it landed on them because they felt bad because the artists would come down and be like, oh my goodness, somebody broke my, you know, and, and then the business owner or the person that donated it or was hoping to get it back or whatever the case was, then they were bummed. And so, we spent a lot, I did not, I will not say we, Christie and her staff spent an incredible amount of time, unfortunately, maintaining the snowman stroll. So, what we want to do is avoid that this year. We don't want that, and especially in the time of year in which it's happening, there's not the excess time for that. So, her staff is at capacity during that time. So, we don't want it to be a hindrance, but it brought a ton of bodies to town. I know that I got a ton of feedback from restaurant owners and business people that said they felt it was very successful. Councilmember Albrecht?
Yeah, now, last year, we had 12 also, and I know there's some left over. Are we gonna, are we gonna use some of those again, or were they all sold and donated to charity?
We're not gonna reuse any of them, I believe.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, no, so, there are just two that didn't sell. So, those are going back to their sponsors. But we wanted fresh, plus, we're also shortening the timeline because, again, like Kevin alluded to with maintenance, the weather was quite a factor as well. So, we're only gonna leave them out for the month of December, carry them through to Fire and Ice. All was fun to have them out there. They took a beating. So, we've washed them all down. Artists have come to fix them. They're about to go to their forever homes and leave my studio.
I was just thinking, if you have two left over, you know, could you put a lone one to the OPC and one to Ra-Ra for the holiday season if they're just sitting in storage?
I can certainly ask the sponsors. There's one sitting here right now.
I think, I think, I think it could go anywhere. There's a nice home for it. Yes.
Yes.
That one right there.
Yes, yeah, that one right there, for anyone's interest. Let Nancy know because we can deliver that. We do deliver. I just can't store them. So, they'd have to take possession of them in the next couple of weeks because I am out of space.
Yeah, they'll have to have a place to go.
They need to go.
Ra-Ra.
That's, I, I'll speak to the Ra-Ra board, and Nancy, you're on the OPC board, so.
Yeah, Music Man is the other one that's available. So, he was the one who covered in music sheets, and he has the little bow and little scarf. He fixes now's.
We have that piano in, in Ra-Ra now that we got from the Paint Creek. That was outside the Paint Creek Arts Center. So, that might work out well. Okay, thank you.
Well, we obviously want to repurpose any of them that we can. We don't want them to go to waste. We want them to go to their homes. And we'll do the same thing this next year because the idea is that all twelve of them, either the person who donated them has the opportunity to keep it once it's done or donate it back to charity. So, that is an option given to the sponsor, whoever, whatever individual sponsors that particular snowman.
Very good. Now, Councilmember Trent?
Yes. So, when I'm looking down this list of revenue and expenditures, it looks like it's a combination of some make money, some don't, some break even, but you still came out about $12,000 in the black. So, I guess I'd say, good job.
Do the best you can.
Yeah, great job. And so, then Junk in the Trunk, it's called Junk in the Trunk, but that's now Makers Market.
It's not gonna be Makers Market.
And so, that revenue is still gonna be $6,000, and the expenditure is $2,500?
Yeah.
That, you kind of, okay, all right. Well, it looks great to me, all these great events. Thank you.
But there's more.
Oh, we have more.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but wait, there's more.
Okay, great.
Was anybody able to attend Pancakes and PJs? Anybody?
Hmm.
Okay, so, this is another event that we got really, really cool feedback on. And this is actually a cash positive event.
Yes, it is. Yes, I saw.
So, as you can see, if you're looking through the budget, this is a cash positive event. We are bringing this back again, an event that we got incredible feedback on. The date is set for December 14th on this, so we already do have the date. Last year, we had 200 people. Do we have a goal for this year, for a number of people?
200 is our max according to the fire chief, and I listen to the fire chief.
Yeah, we always listen to chiefs. So, we're gonna keep this at 200 unless we are given the option to do more. I don't foresee an issue at all with getting 200 people at the event, especially with it being a second year. I think it'll gain a little more traction, and we should be able to continue to fill this event up. And it is a fundraiser. We raised about $1,000 on this event last year. So, it's one that makes a ton of sense. We're able to do some cool things for the community and bring some extra money into the budget line, which is always good and helps us keep things down for next year. Those are the events and the major changes that we've made. All the rest of the events, I don't think I need to go too far in with you guys. Just know, we're always constantly trying to top dress our events. We want to find ways to make them slightly better, change them up, change the eye line. We want to give people a reason to continue to come back and see what we're doing next. So, we are always open to feedback. You guys are welcome to, to hand anything off to us in time, and Councilmember Gould will be happy to bring that to us, and we, we'd love your input along the way because we want to make sure that we're always getting the input of everybody involved. It's super important to us, and we think we can create a better downtown when we do that. When we find ways to work together, we're always gonna do a better job, and that's the reason we're here, right? We're all here to work together and, and do what's best for the city of Rochester. So, you can see on our goals to surpass and delight our visitors with innovative events and promotions. That's obviously very important to us. I think we're doing a good job with that. To create engaged downtown experiences that draw customers and ring the registers. From the feedback we're receiving from both the restaurants and the, you know, different businesses in town, I believe we're doing a good job of that as well. And to continue to support the community and make downtown a place everyone's excited to call home. And ultimately, that's our main goal. And, you know, I talk to a lot of homeowners in town. I talk to a lot of people who live in town. I spend a lot of time in town, and from what I'm hearing in the ear that I have to the ground, I think we're doing a good job on all three of those. I think people are very happy and enjoying themselves on a regular basis in town. So, we're gonna continue to try to do what we've been doing, continue to try to improve it, and continue to try to add things to enhance it. So, that's what we're hoping for.
Very good.
Any questions?
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, PSD team, for the creativity and the strategy and the ideas. It sounds great. Sounds like you're on the right track. I love the, we wanna freshen up things, but yet keep doing the things that everybody loves. The way I look at the numbers is kind of to Councilmember Trent's point is, there's about $300,000 in tax dollars of revenue that comes in, and then you almost multiply it or double it through sponsorships and other fundraisers to spend almost double than that, 562. So, looks good to me.
Yep. Thank you. Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, thank you for the report, Kevin. I just wanted to say, it's been a real pleasure serving on the PSD with Christie and, and you, and Jenna, and Taylor, and Nick, and everybody. It's, it's a, it's a really great committee. Thank you for putting me on that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht?
Kevin, thanks for your presentation. Thanks for your leadership. And I remember back when it was, was it Pirates and Princesses, and that one ran its course, and, you know, we had to come up with new ones. So, I like the fact that you've taken events and refreshed them and combined them, and, you know, you're always reinventing yourself, and we are the regional downtown for so many communities. So, good job to you and the PSD team, and, and looks like you've got a good year planned.
Thank you. Anybody?
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service. Now, onto the DDA. Christie and a former city council person.
Wow.
Mr. Mayor Protem, Mr. Ben Giovanelli, welcome back.
You can, you can leave, you can try and leave, but you never officially leave.
So, is there anything going on with the DDA? I mean, what's a?
No, no, no. It's why I'm still around. Super fun. Thank you, madam. Appreciate it. Council, thank you. Ben Giovanelli, 831 Aspen, Downtown Development, ability chairman, chairperson. Just here tonight, just sort of as Nick alluded to, informational for you guys, and just for the record, Kevin talked about all the fun stuff. What I talk about is sort of the, the infrastructure and making fun stuff happen. So, I, I know my place, and we knew that starting off, you know, we gotta get you stuff at the top and work towards the not-so-fun garbage, but it's fun and life, and things are really cracking at the DDA. So, I wanted to run through this real quick. Just the mouse, Christian.
I think you just clicked the arrows.
Gotcha. Okay, cool. All right. So, these are sort of cursory numbers. So, just kind of a quick reset in history. We were, we had golden objectives. We went back and forth. Our last meeting in February, which happened at the end of February, due to some scheduling conflicts, we sort of, all sort of agreed on the numbers, and then our March meeting, we decided we agreed on it and referred it to council for your, for the budget committee's consideration. And that's really as far as it's gotten, and I understand there's been some feedback. We've gotten new numbers from Anthony. We've gotten new numbers from all over the place. So, I've tried to incorporate the latest and greatest that I have, but our goal tonight really is just kind of walk through at a high level, tell you where we're at. We'll, of course, address the 1,000-pound gorilla in the room, and then, and then we'll sort of get after that. So, our job tonight is sort of listen, take notes. You guys tell us your thoughts, and then we're gonna go back and incorporate that. We'll go ahead and, and re-crunch it, and then our meeting a week from Wednesday will be when the board receives a budget, and then we'll either approve it or whatever, and it'll get referred to council and be part of the overall package for you guys. I think that's a cadence, Nick? You're right? Okay. All right, very good. So, just sort of high level, I don't know, I apologize for the size. I wish I knew how to make it bigger, but yeah. So, the yellow area is the year that we're talking about. So, revenue-wise, year-over-year, we're $268,000 increase year-over-year. So, once again, all these numbers are coming from Anthony, so I'm just taking, you know, he's the resident expert in all this stuff. So, so that's, that's where we're getting these numbers from. The good news on the inflation front is, we've got $50,000 more in interest income this year than we had last year. So, that's the forecast there. There was a brownfield add-back of $69,000. We were the beneficiary of a, some transportation millage increase and also just sort of general property value increase, and then just sort of some chippies adding back, but it ends up being $268,000 year-over-year. On the operations side, it's literally a push year-over-year. Last year, we spent $634,45. This year's budget, $628,266, so 2,100 bucks. Once again, that probably is gonna change depending on how things go tonight, and we get through the final, but that's kind of where we're sitting at right now. And then, in terms of other funding, capital-wise, Big Bright, we jumped up. We've got our 20th anniversary coming up in short order, so we're trying to get out in front of that. We've got $50,000 earmarked in non-Town Square CapEx, and we'll get to that in just a little bit. We had a little alley lighting project that we had earmarked some funds for for the next three years, and then the usual cast of suspects with respect to the streetlight replacement program. I think we're about done, and as soon as we get done, it's gonna start all over again. Two years, yeah. So, it's kind of like we just kind of keep going. So, that's gonna sit on the budget forever and ever, I think. Shockingly, the number's been the same over the course of the last several years, even though we've had some supply issues. But that notwithstanding, it is what it is. Sidewalk program, we always put some money in the budget for fixing up sidewalks, so we try and make sure that the downtown is a safe environment for everybody to walk around in. We do have $20,000 set aside for community art, which I think we saw some pictures earlier of the murals and that sort of thing. So, that's been set aside in the budget again as well. According to the capital improvement plan, we have $132,000 committed this year for that. That's coming straight from the projects committee. So, to the extent that changes, just let us know. Then, capital assets maintenance, we always leave about 200 grand just to take care of stuff in the district, right? And then, the usual $50,000 transfer to parking is gonna happen, same as this year. So, with 2.2 in the, on the inside, as we stand right now, we've got $1,572 accounted for, so call it a million six. So, the delta, about 700 grand is what we want to set aside for the Town Square project. And I asked Christie to put together a couple slides, which has evolved into more than a couple, so we'll try and dial it down a little bit. But anyway, we'll walk through that with you guys in a second. So, as it stands right now, just with what we've got budgeted, it's 60-40 capital to operations, but that's without the 700 grand that we want to allocate. All of that towards the Town Square project. If we do that, it'll be basically a 27-73 ratio capital operation. So, that is sort of high level, you know, where we're at with respect to the budget. Once again, we're here to receive feedback from you guys, and we'll take all those notes back and, you know, crunch them with Anthony and the administration. And then, we've got executive committee on Wednesday. So, lots of opportunities for us to get it right for you guys. So, we'll, we'll endeavor to do that. And then, just sort of the, the front porch project, Town Square. So, we ran through this earlier. I sent you guys a memo, and honestly, I just wanted to get out and make sure that, our goal is to make sure that our partners on the council are with us locked up. So, to the extent that we have information, I want you guys to have it almost simultaneously. So, that way, nobody's surprised by anything. We're all sort of on the same page. In that memo, which I can, I'll go through a couple highlights in a second with respect to the calendar, but there's a lot of unknowns, unknown at the moment. So, we've been through our first sort of detail thing. We're gonna regroup this coming Friday, and then after that, assuming that everything goes well, go to your presentation before the DDA in our April meeting on the 19th. And then, after that, it'll come immediately to council on your following Monday meetings. You're gonna see the same thing that we see. So, you're gonna be able to see, I got sort of yelled at for calling it the pretty pictures, but it's basically the pretty picture. So, I want you guys to see sort of where it's at. I've seen the sneak peek under the hood. It looks awesome. No numbers yet, so I'm not getting too far over my skis, but the, the design team is fantastic, and we can get to that in a second. So, right now, once again, these numbers are coming from Anthony, so I'm just taking them from, you know, what we have. So, 937 is what our fund balance is at present, and in the prior years, we had been able to set aside some funds to catch up. You guys all know the history of COVID and how we got our fund balance wiped out dealing with that. So, we're starting to get, it's starting to get, you know, critical mass now. So, after this year, we got a surplus, and then Anthony has on there a tax collection differential, and then they're sort of unallocated. So, that gives us somewhere between 1.9 and $2 million available for Town Square. I had said 1.8 in my memo. I just, these are all new numbers I literally got today and over the weekend. So, so, and then in 2025, Anthony says, we should expect about a 793, unallocated capital fund balance, and then I'm gonna back out 200 grand of that just sort of for our standard others, non-Town Square stuff. So, that'll give us about 2.5. So, that, I told you guys, 18 to 25, somewhere in that range. It's 2 million to 2.5. So, I was close, and, and I'm trying to stay on top of these as much as possible. But be that as it may, that sort of is, you know, where we're at. Now, I don't, no, I don't have it in front of me. I know it was in your packet, but with respect to the calendar, there was a, the very last page, I thought, that's this, one with my chicken scratch on it, but this is the one that was actually sent out to us from, or given to us at our presentation respect to the calendar, there was a, the very last page, I thought that's this, uh, one with my chicken scratch on it, but this is the one that was actually sent out to us from, um, or given to us at our presentation by, um, Scott at, uh, AKA. Um, so, the, uh, meeting two, which I, and I laid this out in the memo for you guys, but meeting two is what we just had, um, a week ago, Friday, and then we're getting together this coming Friday for meeting three. Meeting four is the nineteenth, which I just described, and then right after that, I had Scott at the meeting for you guys, you're gonna see, right, as soon as we see it, you're gonna see it at your next meeting. And once again, the deliverable at that point's going to be, um, the pretty pictures. Unfortunately, there'll be no numbers attached because we couldn't really price it until we knew what it was. So, hopefully at the outcome of, you know, the meeting and the DDA and the nineteenth and with you guys, we'll have some good indication, one'll fly, one won't fly, and then we'll be able to take it back and, and get serious with respect to the numbers. Um, then after that, it goes back to the subcommittee, um, for sort of the sausage-making part, um, and then the, July nineteenth would be meeting seven, that's when we receive pretty pictures plus price. And I've asked, uh, the team to put it in pieces so we can pick and choose if we need to. So, you guys will know, it'll cost X number of dollars for this, Y number of dollars for that, and we'll be able to have some really good intel on that. Uh, that's the plan. And then, once again, the nineteenth DDA gets it, twenty-fourth you guys get it. So, you're gonna get the same thing, I want you to stay, everybody to be on the same page. And then, basically after the July meeting, twenty-fourth is when, you know, we're gonna get the old Roman thumbs up, thumbs down from you guys. So, so, right now, the only ask with the DDA for the budget as it stands, from a timing standpoint, is just do what we've done in prior years, we have to earmark dollars, we can't collect money and not have it on account for, under the act. So, we have to declare what it's for, the intent set aside is for, um, for front porch, but just like what happened with COVID, it wasn't for front porch anymore, it was for COVID relief. Uh, but then it will come back to you guys in July and then, uh, between, I think July and your first meeting in August is when the, the final bite of the apple's gonna happen. So, I just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page with that. This budget is in no way, shape or form asking us to fund this, 'cause, I mean, I would never do anything without any seeing any numbers, so, uh, all I know is that, under the act, we have to say what the funds are for and that's kind of what we're doing right now. So, um, really, that's about it. I don't, um, I'm gonna let Christie do her thing and then we'll kind of wait till the end and then come back for questions if that's okay.
While Christie's coming, oh, can I ask a question? I think some council members had asked me to, to the city attorney. Um, you know, typically, we pass the budget and then the DDA and the PSD just does what they do with their money. So, they're saying that they're gonna bring that back on the twenty-fourth for an up-or-down vote, is that, is that your understanding of...
It's part of the, their budget's part of the city budget, so they, they compile it like a, I'll say it like a department, um, but then they have to approve it to present to you. Um, I know in the past, there's been a, a, you know, various discussions of, of approving line items and, and, but that's, that's really more of a, a high-level, you, you either like it or you don't. I mean, you can ask for changes, you can do whatever, and that's, I think, what they're looking for now, if there's any, any feedback, but, um, yes, it's, 'cause it's part of the, the city's overall budget, if that makes sense.
If we approve, if we approve the DDA budget as part of our entire budget at our May meeting, whenever we do that, do they have to come back on the twenty-fourth if they wanna do this project? That's, that's just a, that's a...
Process.
Process question.
Yeah, so we have a press. If I, if I could, so what we're really asking for is just a designation of fund balance. We did the same thing in prior years where we set money aside and all council said, okay, yeah, we're gonna let you set it aside, 'cause under the, the TIF Act, we have to, have to declare intent for the money. Um, but what's gonna happen in July is that, all right, now all of a sudden, we got a budget, we got the numbers, we're gonna ask for a budget, and we're taking it out of unallocated fund balance and actually letting us spend it. That's what's gonna happen in July. Because what, if you think of it this way, Mr. Mayor, when we did this before, we had, I don't know, was it a million-two or a million-three saved up for front porch version one, then COVID came along and we just killed it and then all that money went into COVID relief. So, it's, it's not spent until council arrives the transfer.
I understand that, but I don't remember you coming back to the council to ask to spend it on parking or did we?
We approved it.
Yeah, we came back and said, one-point-two million to the parking fund and then the rest to pay for the first, the PS, I'm sorry, to pay for the PSD, so you had to approve that reallocation of that budget hours.
And I think that was, a lot of that was, you're right, with the parking, uh, there was a proposal that they didn't wanna, uh, the PSD, or the DDA wasn't proposing to put money into the parking and the city council pushed back, P, or, and DDA said, okay, and then that's how the, the sausage, Giovinelli's sausage was made. So, it is still part of your, um, your overall thumbs-up, thumbs-down on the budget. They would have to come back for a, a project like this especially, um, I mean, otherwise you would just wipe out the DDA. I mean, I mean, it really is your, I mean, it's, it's their money, but it's the city's, they're, they're an arm of the city in this, in this respect.
Well, that's the power of the purse, right? So, you guys get final say at budget approval. So, under the TIF Act, to the extent that any capturing authority, not just the DDA, but whoever, if there's no use for it, they're required to return it back to the, whoever it came from. So, that's why we have to have it say that it's earmarked for this. It's the say, approving our savings account. Um, but after that, it's going to be, and, first of all, I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't do it myself and I wouldn't do it to you guys anyway, because we need to be into this together and I just, you know, there's things are happening, the problem is, is that if, we don't have the benefit of the counter, right? So, if we could scooch the budget two months in the future, by, you know, the end of July or whatever, then we would all, we'd have all the information we need at the time, but you really don't need it, 'cause all this is, is just an earmarking of fund balance for an intended purpose, but until you say, go, then that fund, that purpose doesn't happen, so.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Yeah, it makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Uh, Christie?
Sure. So, um, some council members and some other members of the community have reached out to me, basically to say, how'd we get here? So, I thought I'd just kind of share that publicly, because I thought this might be helpful for everybody, 'cause I've had several conversations, but maybe if we all have it together, then we can answer questions and be on the same page. So, um, where this came from? So, it started with the DDA vision session, one in two thousand seventeen and then once again in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, two thousand seventeen, obviously pre-COVID, we had brought in the community and the idea was to ask them, you know, we think downtown's pretty good, but what could make it better? What would make you wanna come here more often? Um, from that, then we got this information and this was all confirmed in twenty-one, because then, as Ben said, you know, the money was spent on COVID relief, but we didn't want to start saving money again for the front porch project if that wasn't something that had changed. As everyone has said, since COVID, a lot of priorities and interests changed, so we held a different visioning session in twenty-twenty-one, asking similar questions, and we added a little art in there as well, which we'll get to that in a moment, um, but asking people to confirm if these were things that they wanted. And again, these were the things that rose to the top. Um, a town square, people wanted us to have more of a sense of community or identity. Intergenerational and cultural and economic diversity, they were already in two thousand seventeen, I think we already started to talk about diversity, equity, inclusion before it became the thing that it is now. Um, gathering in green spaces downtown, this is why we have some of the pocket parks that we have and more things that we're talking about, about more placemaking. Uh, walkability and bike-friendly, we know that we are, we have an eighty-seven on walk score, but we could always do better. Um, and of course, with our trails, we're always looking for more ways that we can incorporate biking downtown. Maximizing our waterways, trails and connecting to downtown, that's a constant conversation that we have, that came up in our goals and objectives again this year. And then, of course, celebrating our history, that's something that's very important to our community, we heard it both visioning sessions, so it's something that made the list. So, from the visioning session, this led us down a path. So, I'm gonna give you a couple terms, 'cause we're gonna be talking about them a little bit tonight, and it's funny, because coming back from the National Main Street Conference, uh, a couple weeks ago, they were talking about a lot of things that we were talking about a few years ago, so I feel like we were kind of ahead of the game with our community giving us these ideas. So, I don't know if everyone's familiar with the term "social capital," but it's all about relationships, the network of relationships in a community, bonding, bonding similar people and bridging diverse people. Collective action for the greater good, and this is how we've been looking at a lot of things with our lens, that we built this philosophy that I'm gonna be coming up to in a moment. And then the connected economy, this is the thing that people, and you hear this about millennials, people are reprioritizing and so much after COVID, it's even more prevalent, that people are wanting to build relationships and connections rather than amassing stuff that isn't what we're doing anymore, hence junk in the trunk, turning it what it turned into. But, I digress. So, we put together this little schematic in the yellows, I apologize, it's a little light up there, but basically, we tried to find a way that there's ways, there's all these different items that we talk about that are important to us, that came up in the visioning session, and we felt like the intersection of all of them is our downtown. That's our community, that's our place, that's our space. So, how can we leverage this relationship and make it into something tangible, something that means something to people? And then we talked about culture, particular group of people and how we do things, and that's what we're gonna be talking about tonight. So, this is where things started developing into what we felt our culture was, and we felt that part of this is what we loosely call the front porch project. That's where the front porch stories came from, that's where a lot of the things that we've been doing came from, because the idea was that if we took it way back to when we had that most simple point of connection in a neighborhood, it was our front porches. It was those places, when they built those houses, that they wanted to see their neighbors going by, everybody knew what was going on, you'd stop for a glass of lemonade. We've lost that somewhere along the line, but as you see at planning commission, all the houses that come ring back in, everybody wants the porch. It's coming back and we're trying to capitalize on that trend. But we feel the front porch is more than just the physical manifestation of that, but it's a philosophy. And so, we developed these, this front porch project, if you will, with four pillars. Uh, wellness, which wellness is a big topic these days, especially with our aging population, this is something we need to be thinking about. So, we need to be thinking and investing in the health of our residents and our visitors. Community, improving quality of life, we talk about quality of life so much and it's become more beyond that to quality of place. This is something that was talked about a lot when we were at the conference the last two weeks ago. A lot about quality of life directly correlates to quality of place and where you live, where you spend your time. People, because we did hear everyone saying that they wanted to celebrate our history and we have some amazing people in this town and some great stories, and we need to find ways that we continue to weave that into what we do, which is going to be leading me to the Town Square momentarily, which is our place. So, we have all the, if we have this philosophy, these tenants, they're gonna hold up what we're doing and why we're doing it, then having a place like the Town Square, which is our physical manifestation of this, is going to make it real for us. So, the Town Square itself, why? So, this is actually a couple little quotes that we've been using and some information that we're using to inform our decisions, that public spaces are an important asset to our cities. They provide people with many opportunities to come together and engage with their community. If public spaces are successful, they're inclusive of the diversity of groups present in our cities and create a social space for everyone in society to participate. And that's a lot of what you'll see in two weeks when we're talking about our Town Square. It isn't, as I keep saying, we're not building, you know, a Tesla or a Maserati. I'd love a Chevy, maybe with heated seats. We want it to be an accessible place, a sensible place, but a place that people can come when we're throwing movies in the moonlight, or a place they can come and just sit down and eat their sandwich at lunch. We want it to be the accessible place that crosses barriers, economic, social, whatever it means, and it also provides those opportunities for people to connect and share. Another piece of that, that we heard a lot about was art, and that's something we were able to do during COVID, it's one of the few new programs that we were able to do during COVID, because we were trying to find ways to bring people downtown to event without eventing, is what we called it. And so, we started incorporating more art into our community. I've said this many times before, that places we go, I love to look and say, oh, we've got that, we've got that, and I hated it every time I went to a downtown and saw these amazing art projects and we didn't have any. And now we have these two beautiful murals, but I want, I want more. And the DDA wants more, which is why they're setting some money aside and they've actually formed a Love Local Art Committee, but art was part of, one of the things that we talked about with the front porch project. And art isn't just beautiful to look at, it's also economic. So, this is from Yes Magazine, "Studies show the public art has a host of benefits to community. It's community-building and it helps come back feelings of social isolation and anxiety. When locals participate in public art, this is amplified. In a study in London back in two thousand eighteen, eighty-four percent of respondents felt believing, they believe that participating in public art projects benefited their well-being, improved their quality of life. There's also economics behind art and there will be art incorporated to the Town Square and throughout town as well. Having these pieces, this place to gather and call their own, this place that they look and they take pride in things they've done because they've been a part of the creation, this goes back to this downtown ecosystem that we're nurturing and creating and developing as we keep going, because downtowns are never done, cities are never done." So, again, just circling back, and this is part of the front porch of where we are going, it's about building bridges, it's about bridging the gaps of diversity, equity, inclusion. It's about talent retention and attraction. This is another thing that's a hot topic right now, that again, people are looking to figure out where they wanna live before they find a job, because it's about their quality of life and quality of place, and we feel, if you read any articles, Project for Public Spaces, I know Marilyn and I are big fans of theirs, there's a great article that talks about the economics of place and what makes a place desirable, and green space and town squares, places for people to gather, that raises the bar of where people wanna live, it's meaningful to them. And that's one thing, while we have a gorgeous park, I feel that downtown, if our forefathers had known, maybe they would've built me a little Town Square right in the middle, so we need something. Um, celebrating our community, as I said before, we have an amazing place here and any opportunities that we have to come together and gather and celebrate is pretty amazing. And creating our place, that's our why. We heard this from our community in two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-one. The people that came to the twenty-one visioning session, almost two-thirds of them did not attend the one in seventeen, so it was not a symptom of groupthink. These were new people, we didn't ask them, do you want a Town Square? We asked them what you'd like to see and they came around the same concept all over again. It's like lightning striking twice. But one more why. A good city's like a good party, people stay longer than necessary because they're really enjoying themselves, and I think that's what we wanna accomplish. People love this place, whether they live here or they visit here. This is a place that's recognized as some people is their place, and that's our why behind our Town Square, behind everything that we're doing, is because we're trying to create this place for our community to be. And we'll do it respectfully, we'll do it economically, we'll do anything we need to do to deliver this place to our community who's asked for it. And then, as Ben already said, next steps, we're gonna be seeing you on April twenty-fourth. Now, we're open for questions.
I thought we were gonna see pictures for a second.
No, pretty pictures. April twenty-fourth. Stay tuned. News at eleven.
So close.
Yeah, no, and, uh, so, that actually is a short presentation in Christie's world, so just, you sort of be grateful.
I went fast.
I know you did, I appreciate that. Uh, but no, just wanted to kind of give you a feel for where, you know, sort of, is there, 'cause we started this in two thousand seventeen and then, like we said, it got sort of put down, so I thought it was important to, to kind of revisit, how did we get here? I feel like the talking heads on, well, how did we get here? Uh, so, uh, so, yeah, that's where we're at. Um, so I guess, stay tuned, News at eleven, the twenty-fourth is gonna be the time when you see the pretty pictures, and I've been through one so far and what I've seen looks killer, it's gonna be awesome. So, so between Scott Reynolds at AKA Tag Carrier and a SEAL, they've been fantastic and really bringing some super good ideas and, but you know, it's great seeing pretty pictures. You want to figure out, all right, how much is it going to cost to carve, to cut into the side of the hill, that kind of stuff, right? So I'm not getting, you know, too excited until I start seeing that stuff. But in terms of the subcommittee, it's the Standing Site Development Committee on DDA is Tony La Puma, Bob Bloomingdale and Roger Knapp. So we've got a wealth of knowledge there from those cats. The Honorable Marilyn Trent is also on the committee, so we've got council intimately involved in these, the subcommittee sessions, so that was super important to us. And then Christie and I are just there to get in the way. So, oh, well, Nick is, he doesn't tell. Nick and Anthony tell us what we can do and how much we can spend. So, but the team's fantastic. So I just want you guys to know that we're not here to ask you to let us spend two and a half million dollars on a town square right now. We probably will be in a few months, but that's only going to be after all of the unknowns or most of the unknowns become known and we're all sort of, you know, on the same page and nobody's like, you know, feels that they're left out. I want there's, I want this to be, because it's only going to be successful if we're all into it. If we're not, then it's not, it'd be a bummer, but it's going to be what it's going to be. Anyway, that's what we've got. We're, so we're just here to absorb information from you guys. So I just would say, let her rip, we're going to take copious notes and then go ahead and put stuff together and then we'll flip it back to you guys after our meeting on the 19th.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, you had a comment?
I do, just to wrap this part of it up. So, so we're not doing this in a vacuum. So today I met with Chief John, we went over to South Rewald and his team on his new building. And we met with Mosheri in Rewald on the elevator. And we met with Mosheri on his property. And I talked to Suave last week. So tomorrow after staff meeting, we're cutting it pretty short and we're going to sit in a room with all of our brains. We've got big aerial maps to show everybody where everything's supposed to go. And then what are we missing infrastructure wise? How do we need traffic lights? Do we need pedestrian crossings? What do we need? Where do we need the art spaces? We're going to go back to the Lions and ask them to incorporate their gazebo. So this is, the good part is, the DDA owns this lot. Today, Mr. Rewald was still worried about how much he has to spend on the new building and the gravel lot because that land is worth so much money that he has to put up a product to cover that cost. We own free and clear that, the parking lot. He said, I don't have to do a couple of things at that market because if you're successful and you guys can put together your town square, it's across the street from mine. I'm going to tie it together with sidewalks and landscaping so that we're all in this together. So it's the next frontier. Vitrano, James Vitrano talked about this with me the second year I was here, stood down on the parking lot and said, this is the one off of downtown. We're not going to bother downtown, but it's going to migrate down here because this is where all the property is. And sure enough, it's starting to happen. So again, this is part of the big picture that we're going through. So it's not being done in a vacuum and I want you to all to know. That's the planning side of me. This is the best part of what we're doing down here totally, so.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Ben and Christie for your presentation. This is exactly what I would expect the DDA to be doing. You got to be out there thinking about what is the next cool, amazing thing to bring downtown Rochester to, you know, 20 years ago, we did, started with the Big Bright Light Show, but what's next? So thank you. This is exactly what you need to be doing and thinking about. Thank you for sharing the why. That was a lot of my questions and so I really look forward to seeing the details, but march on, keep, keep doing what you're doing. This is what I expect in regards to the front porch project. And then I have two budget questions. So the 97,000 from the Transportation Village. So is there any, and I, I've asked Anthony this, I don't believe there's any legal responsibility to send, spend that money on transportation. But my question is, should we be spending some money on transportation or studying or what the downtown needs for transportation? And maybe it gets woven into the front porch project that the transportation piece of it. I, I think we owe it to the taxpayers that put that money in to consider that. Okay. Second thing, there is a budget ask for the Rochester Hills Museum. Downtown benefits from the museum. I mean, we all love the museum, we all love the services they provide. I would really like to see if the DDA can participate in, in that budget ask.
Sure, how much was it?
They're asking for 40.
Okay.
Well, thirty new.
Thirty new, yeah, ten from, from thirty new. Oh, thirty new, okay. Where's the 10 funded at right now?
Tens from general fund.
Okay, got it.
That's all I got.
Super. Yeah, I mean, the Transportation Village, that was literally bank error in our favor. I had no idea until Anthony brought it up. So, I mean, I'm as, I'm as, you know, obviously as concerned as you all, I want to make sure that every single dollar we collect from taxpayers has to be responsibly spent. And if there was an intention for it to be spent that way, we need to spend it that way to the extent that, you know, we can or we have the ability to. So agree 100%.
Councilmember Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. I was pleased to see when we had our budget committee meeting on April 6th, we had a preliminary budget, you know, spreadsheet of, of the DDA and there were a couple of things that we brought up that were missing. I liked the fact that you listened to, I guess Anthony or Marcy took back some of Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem, Marilyn and my concerns, which were site development for non-cap, non-front porch projects and some other line items you had on there. So thank you for that. And again, from tonight, you're getting some more. So I like this, that it's, it's incremental feedback and then, and massaging the budget. Secondly, I just wanted to say, when, we are all elected officials. We represent the people of this, of this city, the residents. And I like the fact that we've tied this back into the visioning sessions because those are the people talking, you know? And this was number one with a bullet back in 2017 when I did the first visioning session. And I, I was able to participate in the 2021 one and, and to see this and all, any of us who travel to Europe, there's always a city center and a place where people gather. And, and this is, this is motherhood and apple pie. So I hope, you know, the numbers work in our favor and this comes to a fruition. And without the pandemic, we might already have a city center there. And, and I just, the last thing I wanted to thank Nick for sort of looking at the big picture. We can't do this in isolation. We can't say, oh, the DDA is doing the city center, Rewald's doing this, Mosheri is doing this. We're, we don't have, we're only 3.7 square miles. We have finite amount of space. So I like the fact that, you know, I use my three-legged stool. I had to get that in there so I'd get the royalty check. But, you know, the fact that you're working together with us here on city council and with city administration at the back of the room, I, I, I love to see this dream become a reality. Thank you for your presentation, both of you.
Absolutely, thank you. So with respect to the capex, so we did add 50 back on here and, but we have 200,000 in the succeeding years. Just the, the idea was is to, anything extra we would put into this project this year, right? So, and then just really quick in terms of sort of process, assuming that it goes forward on July 20, whatever, the 24th, groundbreaking would happen sometime, somewhere in October is the thought process or maybe right around Lonnyup. And then I've been told by Scott over at the architect firm, it's going to take about a year, so we should have it done and ready for the dedication on Lonnyup in 2024, five? No, four.
Four.
Yeah, it's three now, four. Yeah, sorry. The fiscal year always screws me up. I'm a calendar year tax guy, so it always messes me up. But yeah, so the idea, I just was sort of thinking about it, but you know, it'll be the mayor and Santa, you know, dedicating the, the thing if it all goes through, so that'll be sweet. Anyway, just, and then with respect to the big picture, that was a huge thing we talked about last on, on the 31st, is making sure that all of the things that are happening all in that area are being considered and to the extent that there is mitigating circumstances or things that we need to be out in front of that we need, you know? And so when you guys get it, you'll get our piece, but it's all going to be, you know, all of that will be incorporated. So we're waiting, we're on it too, I promise.
Councilmember Trent.
Well, yes, I have been on the DDA for several years and I have been part of a lot of this or, or participating or as best I can. And I have been on-site development. So I, I do like, I like what I'm seeing and I like to say what I really like is the, talking about the other 353 days of the year, that the farmer's market isn't there and the multi-use and the multi-generational part and multi-use being, you know, families and children, grandmas and grandpas, bathrooms, public bathrooms. I'm pretty sure that a lot of people are going to pretty get excited about the public bathrooms. I like the location of them. That will, I think everyone else will be too, but that it'll come later. And I also like that you're thinking about the larger part of the city to be interconnected so that you don't have something totally different happening over here and then later down the line, you're thinking, oh, wait a minute, wished we would have thought of that. So love that as well. And, and I love shade. Shade.
What's like, we, last Friday, I was like, what are those circles? Like, oh, those are trees.
Well, and other than, other than, I know, I'm just thinking, I thought they were more than, but we'll talk about that. You know, I thought it was more than a tree.
Find out on Friday.
We will. I'm not going to, I won't, I won't share anymore. But yeah, and I'm, I, I really like the idea of design and design is connecting to other parts of the city. So I'm very excited about that.
Yep, for sure. And we're grateful for your participation. It's nice having somebody with that creative vision on the committee because it provides, you know, I'm a numbers guy, right? So I have like zero, my wife's an interior designer, so like, you know, the competing brothers are right brain, left brain. But so I'm grateful for having you and I'm, I'm really grateful that you're participating in this with us. So thank you for that.
Even when you're saying, okay, could be a little more quiet, but.
Yeah, no, 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 it's good. This is, because this is why, it's all collaborative and it's all feedback and it's super important. So I, I think we're blessed with a really good team and a really great partner.
Yeah, I'm excited about what I've seen. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ben and Christie. I did really appreciate the write-up. It helps, gives us a little bit, step back, see the history of this, plus giving us a timeline, if you will. I did appreciate that. So my questions are, because part of the write-up really spoke to what the DDA's mission is and what it performs in town. COVID hits, right? You guys have a fund balance and you found a way to support the downtown and the merchants and probably thwarted many of them from going bankrupt, which was wonderful. So as I'm looking at the budget here for not just this year, because there's portions that go into FPP in the next fiscal year, correct?
Could, could. We don't know yet, but maybe. Depending if you guys allow us to or not.
Okay, because, because I got confused when we're talking shovel and dirt in October.
Well, so, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just so the plan, so whatever, whatever's presented in July, assuming everybody's on the same page and it's a, it's this version and it'll be done in one calendar year and the price is X, then that's what that is. If it is more than that and expands two years just from a set of costs, that's kind of where that was going. So once again, I don't know yet, I'm just trying to at least let everybody kind of know where our heads at. I, I don't, there's no way that I would see this going past two years. I mean, I just.
Okay.
That's, I mean.
So the feedback I would give you guys, I appreciate the project, I'm looking forward to seeing the drawings, et cetera. What's not in the budget is any contingency should there be an emergency. Because if there is an emergency, we've already allocated all those funds to a project, where do you guys go for funding should you need it? You come here, which means you take out of the general fund. Well, I'm going to have some pause there. So I guess what I'm looking for is how can you do both, right? Save for a rainy day and also protect this project. I, I don't want to spend the entire fund balance on the project and then leave you guys barren or it, I just, I have caution there.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good point. It's a valid point. We'll definitely take into consideration. Once again, I don't know the number, so it come back that it's way too much or it's not enough. And then that will definitely track to what you're talking about. Once we get a good feel for that, then I'll be able to answer that question for you. But yeah, I, I don't want to just, you know, reduce to zero because COVID version 2.0 could come along. Or, you know, alternatively, if COVID 2 comes along and we're six months in, it's just, all right, hit the brakes, we need to shift gears and redirect funds, we'll pick it up later. I don't, I'm praying, I just don't think this country could take 2.0 and COVID. But I am, I am optimistic that that's all behind us now and we're going to march forward. But point taken, note made, and I will make sure that we cover that for you for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Gould.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm not going to reiterate everything. My fellow council member says it seems like a great idea. I'm really looking forward to seeing what's coming. I did want to reiterate something that Mayor Protem Salvia mentioned about the RTA money. I, I know there's some connection with, with the OPC and you have this money, it's not necessarily going to have to go to public transportation or mass transit, however you want to say it. But I can't think of anything that could have more of a negative impact on a downtown if it's done poorly. So I, I'm concerned about this and a lack of sort of a five-year plan or a 10-year plan on what is this going to look like? We're going to have some expansion of transit at OPC perhaps. I mean, do we need wider lanes in the road? I don't know. Where are these buses going to be housed? Where are they going to be fueled? And I think a lot of that's going to have an impact on the downtown. And I hope that we're thinking of using at least some portion of that money for, for a plan.
Agreed. Yeah, like I said, it was literally just bank error in our favor and I have no idea about any of it. So I'm relying on the administration and the finance director to tell us what we can do and what we can't do. But yeah, I agree a million percent.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I just want to say thank you for the presentation from the PSD and from the DDA tonight. I think that it's great that as progressive, progressive as you have been, that you are moving forward to even bring a better type of economic positive to our community. Every community that has one of these has been by far more economically benefited and I think that's where we need to look as well. And then I'm looking forward to whatever comes as well, very excited about it. I do appreciate the administration actually bringing in all the developers as well. I think that was the bigger piece because I do know that if this comes in, the value of everything around there is going to increase and it's going to bring in more tax dollar where the RTA money won't make a difference anyhow because the county still doesn't have a full plan laid out for that. So I think it'll, you know, if it goes away, it goes away. It's not something that I know you're not going to count on anyhow. It's like, you know, you get a bonus, you don't rethink about keeping that all the time like it's always going to be there. So.
Spend like American sale there, right? Ninety-seven grand.
Yeah, right.
No, we're not going to do that. So point taken. And I did want to mention too, that part of this process is also the opportunity for grant money, right? So we're, you know, so there's really sort of three driving things. Number one, to create the town square, the central gathering spot, but also to, to utilize as much local resources as we possibly can. One thing that was interesting, so I'm thinking, you know, I mean, I was up there for 12 years, so I know the process. It's like literally the slowest thing ever to get anything done in government. It's a total snoozer. So I'm like, oh, this is going to take a million years. I'm going to be like dead by the time this thing gets done. But Scott, our architects had mentioned that, that with, with Oakland County, they have a, I forget the program, Nick, you can tell me what it is, but it's basically an approved vendor list. So these vendors go out and they get priced by the county and it's basically bulk pricing. So what it does is it gives us, it lets us know that the county has vetted these resources and they are, you know, they meet the county specs with respect to pricing and, you know, effort and, and quality and that sort of thing. So that was super helpful. So that hopefully will accelerate things a little bit. But the big thing for the grants is that, I mean, as you guys know, there's lots of grant dollars out there. So if you're ticking the right boxes, you know, doors are going to open up. So everybody's got their sort of ears now. When we were sitting through last Friday, you know, we were talking about one of the faces. You guys are, I mean, what I've seen so far, this thing's killer, it's awesome. But there's one part, it was a ADA access, kind of a ramp going up to the one side because it's, it's really a challenging spot because of the topography. And Nick's like, oh dude, that's going to fit, you know, this particular, but this particular grant opportunity. We, I hate to use shovel-ready, but we're, we literally have shovel-ready, ready project here that we'll be able to go out and pitch. So understand that this may be helped, Steve, what you were talking about, you know, we're going to have a budget of whatever, let's just say it's $2 million, just for sake of discussion. If we can go out and grab a million dollars of grant money, then all of a sudden the problem's solved, right? So just know that we're trying, this is not like, I mean, this one is pretty good at finding stuff under rocks. So, so we'll, we'll certainly endeavor to get after that. But I just want you to know that that's, this is not just a run to empty the checkbook at the DDA. This is doing a project that's going to be generational and transform, transformational and generational for this community. And it'll outlive all of us, hopefully. When my kids are up here on council and DDA, they're going to be like, my dad was awesome that he helped get this done, right? And then, you know, for you guys as well. So, but yeah, we've taken copious notes, we get it. And just know that you've got my promise that as soon as I know something good, bad or indifferent, you guys are going to be the next one to get. So I also promised the next memo, I said, now it won't be four pages long. But I wanted to make sure that you guys had sort of a full background and laid the calendar out. So the next ones are going to be very simple. We met here, this is what happened. I suspect you'll probably get one after our meeting this coming Friday. I've got to go to Charlotte in business, I'm making it out like the following Wednesday. Maybe a little after our meeting, but I'll send you guys a note to kind of let you know what happened at meeting three, so you can get a feel for it and where we're headed. But yeah, good stuff. It was fun. It was fun. It's, you know, like I said, for me, it's, you know, looking at the what-if and the design, to look at the building as it's proposed, it's basically just a facade with a giant front porch, but super cool. So anyway.
Councilmember Trent.
Yeah, just last comment here. The one thing I have questioned is that if you tell somebody you have a $2.5 million budget, that's sometimes what it costs. So you tell them you got $2 million, you know, that's what it costs all of a sudden.
Now, in the private sector, that's never a problem for me. I would never have to do that, unfortunately, I'm dealing.
I understand, I understand, but I get it. I'm just saying, I'm just talking about the elephant in the room. It could, and so if, you know, just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I get it.
And I mean, but I mean, just to make sure that all of our vendors know, maybe it's not $2.5 million, maybe you've got another project over here you want to throw some money at.
So what Scott had suggested, and I think you were part of the meeting, is that assuming everything goes well on the 19th, and then with you guys on the 24th, we're going to go out and get a construction manager, I'm calling general contractor for like a better descriptor, but that's the one that's going to own the budget. So unfortunately, it seems backwards, and I would never do this in the private sector, although I do have clients that flip through the proposal, look to the last page, how much is it first before they even look at anything else, right? I mean, it's just the way it goes. But I'm not going to say that we're going to go out, I'm not going to overextend us and go out and get a Taj Mahal bid if I don't have that kind of money. So it's a catch-22, but I agree completely. We're just going to rely on the professionals to tell us, you know.
Well, and maybe that's when you talk about a rainy day's fun, like Councilmember Sage said, that, you know, this isn't like a deep well, that, you know, because if you're lean at the top of 2.5, you want to have some cushion, and we all know that that's good to have, and we know you're doing that.
Take twice as long, cost twice as much.
Yeah, exactly. And so I love it that you're looking for the grants, we talked about the grants, and I think the transportation part, obviously, because that's where you're connecting everything. So that's already in place, that you're going to connect all these mocherie in the park and, you know, lions, and just to show everybody all the great things they can do in the town square, kind of becoming more of a knit center, obviously, if you're calling it the town square. So that was my last two cents.
Yes, ma'am. We are on it, I promise.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you.
A longer session ever on the nights, I hope.
Yeah.
Once again, thank you for your time, we really appreciate it. And you guys know me, you've all got my cell phone, so just.
And thank you for your transparency, I appreciate that.
Looking forward to seeing the next step.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment tonight that's not on the agenda? Is Brian out there?
I am, and there are no callers online.
Okay. All right, on to approval of the minutes, the consideration of minutes for the regular meeting of March 27, 2023.
Still moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration of special event application from Rochester Hills Christian School to hold the Run for Christian Education 5K on Thursday, May 3. Next is a consideration of a special event application for moms, demand action for gun sense in America, to request permission to place orange ribbons on downtown light poles to create awareness for Gun Violence Weekend on June 2 to the 4. Consideration of, next, a consideration of special event application from Leader Dogs for the blind to hold the Bark and Brew 5K on Saturday, June 10, at the Rewald Lot. Next is consideration for special event application from Rochester PSD to hold the Makers Market on Saturday, June 24, on West Fourth Street, I think we heard something about that. Next is consideration of a special event application from Di Santa Nomiya International to hold Potts 5K Run Walk on Sunday, September 24, in the municipal park. Think everybody better get in shape to run these 5Ks.
Yeah.
Next is, not that anybody's not in shape, wasn't looking at anybody in particular. Next is a consideration of a special event application from St. John Lutheran Church to hold their 24th Annual Praise in the Park on Sunday, August 27, in the municipal park. And next, and last, is review of the current special event calendar.
Motion to approve as presented.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion, Mayor Protem Salvia.
I have a question. It's regarding item B, but really it's in regard to any time an applicant wants to put something up on our light poles, you know, we do them for breast cancer awareness, this one's for gun violence. Is it part of the application, a timing when they take them down as well? Or whose responsibility is it to take them down?
City manager.
Yes, it is. So we make sure we give them a drop dead date, and if they don't take them down, we will, and then we'll charge them by the hour.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, there are no old businesses in table items. Next on to public hearings is a public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance, Article 2 CBD, Central Business District, Sections 1100, 1101, 1102, and 1103, restrict some uses to upper non-street level stories. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments first?
I don't, this is the, we talked about this one time, already went through the DDA, this is again, came out of working with other downtowns and the concern that we're starting to see the easier tenants, the non-retail or non-service industries dominating the first floor, too many dark windows at night. And we love our office users and our non-retailers, but there's a place for them upstairs in most cases, many communities, including Birmingham, locally, that Farmington does it, Northville does it, Plymouth does it, that you try to limit that amount on the first floor. So it's been noticed, I haven't got to push back from the folks, the five businesses that are affected, that are now offices, have the right, if this passes, to be non-conforming, and they could re-lease to office users if they like. They're aware of that, and they did not push back at all. So that's the public hearing, if this goes into effect, it'll take about a month, I think, to get in the paper, et cetera, before it would take place. And we've notified everybody, again, that's been involved, that it would affect presently.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any new correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, at 8:13, I will open the public hearing. Is there a public comment? Sir, come on up. Introduce yourself, name and address, and welcome.
My name is John Christman. I have my family, and I own the property at 436, 438, and 440 Main Street, which is on the southeast corner of University and Main.
Of course.
And Nick, I didn't get a notice about this meeting, just so you know. And I think it affects me greatly.
You and I talked about this, so.
Well, we talked about it, but I didn't get a notice about this meeting.
An ordinance wouldn't be a notice, it was, we talked to the owners of the property, so it's in the paper, and follows that way. So it's not an individual notice to every business.
Okay, yes, we talked about it, and on the phone. But I have a statement I'd like to make. My family purchased the property that I just mentioned in 1913, and in 110 years, in 110 years we've owned the property, I cannot think of anybody else with more experience as landlords in the central business district. In 1992, we lost most of the building in a natural gas explosion. With the help of Roy Rewald and others in the community, we were able to rebuild the building in 18 months. As a consequence of the explosion, we lost all of our tenants that had occupied the destroyed two-thirds of the building. It took all of our economic resources to rebuild the building, and we began the process with no guarantees that there would be tenants to occupy the spaces. Despite having a huge sign on site for over a year, not a single retail business called us with an interest in leasing space. The only interested party at the time was Payne Weber, who subsequently leased 3,700 square feet on the corner. The space was finished for their use with a series of offices and a central common area and counter. After Payne Weber left, we leased it to three different banks, and now it is leased by a real estate company. If this ordinance passes, my experience tells me it is unlikely that we would be able to lease this space to a business that you consider retail, because it is too large, and it would be extremely expensive to gut the interior and reconfigure the space to retail use. I believe this proposed ordinance poses a threat to our investment. I do not want to be in the position of rejecting a proposed lease and accepting a weaker tenant or a vacancy, because they do not fit somebody's ideal business profile. Passing an ordinance like this proposed one is a bit heavy-handed, and instead of a collaborative effort involving landlords and the city working together to find solutions that work for everybody. I do not believe you can legislate a free market economy by restricting legal, responsible businesses from doing business in certain areas. We all know that most downtowns have suffered the loss of many retail stores to malls over the past 50 years. Rochester is fortunate, because many of these vacancies have been filled by businesses you now seek to restrict to the second floor. I have heard many people comment on the abundance of hair and nail salons and restaurants in the downtown area. Some may call this a unbalanced mix of businesses, yet no one is proposing that a quota system of types of businesses be started. Businesses in town are there because they want to be, and because they can make a living in the downtown. I do not believe that retail stores are avoiding downtown because all the spaces are taken by offices. You must also remember that offices employ many people who frequent the coffee shops and restaurants and contribute to the downtown economy. You cannot attract tenants you want by restricting the ones you don't want. Over the many years, we have been landlords in the central business district, who have seen many occasions of high occupancy and also periods of low occupancy. There are times when the office use of some ground floor space has been the only alternative to a vacant space. This proposed ordinance is a restraint of trade, and I fear will result in more vacancies, not more retail. I've also been informed that the new use of the former Greens Art Supply Building is going to be allowed to house offices on the ground floor. If exceptions to the rules are going to be made, then I find this unfair, and it provides them with opportunities to lease to a wider range of businesses than others. Again, this is an obvious restraint of trade. I oppose this proposed ordinance. You are treading on dangerous ground with this proposal, and I urge you to consider the consequences carefully. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there further, anybody got any questions? Well, we just have people comment, and then we discuss. So if we have questions, we can, are there any further public comments?
Ben Giovinelli, 831 Aspen, Rochester Downtown, Devote and Authority Chairperson. Just wanted to let council know that the DDA passed unanimously a support for this effort, and comments notwithstanding. We think it's an important endeavor that the planning commission has undertaken, so just wanted to let you know that we fully supported it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Public hearing is closed at 8:19. Counsel. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. So a few things. I do happen to agree with Mr. Christman regarding the restraint of trade in downtown of deciding who can be there and what. And my comments are now coming from the standpoint of reaching, talking to some developers and business owners in the area who do have even rental office space, even though it's not right on Main Street, it's on Walnut, and some of those areas surrounding there. And their biggest thing that they talked about is, you know, why are not more businesses open on Main Street? Okay? So to the point of the hairstylist and everything else, they're not open either at nighttime. So why are we only going towards office space? Because to me, and I know this, I think you need to tread very lightly, I did send this up to the state for the use of getting some legal advice on this subject, because it is restricting trade with especially the named real estate companies that have been affected by this. And I don't think that people understand how often people do come in and do that and utilize these offices in the evening. They're not open for retail, but neither are our retail businesses fully open. And you can't just have them open one night. So we are a dark city when it comes to having retail in the evening. It's been commented on for a long, long time, and we can't sit here and think otherwise. But I think it's wrong, because a lot of these businesses, too, that have come and gone, especially on the corner where Mr. Christman was speaking of, that is an ideal office space for a real estate company or offices over retail all day long because of parking. I mean, you don't have quick accessible parking for those who want to come in and shop. And then, you know, I'll go back to the other one, that people are still complaining about having to park in town and pay for that. I mean, there's a thing, I understand that, yes, you got to park and pay and park everywhere, but when we're looking at our own downtown, I don't care what any other community is doing. If we are trying to be progressive in ideas that are, you know, to bring those here, we should also keep an open mind to the businesses downtown and not restrict the trade of that business based on certain uses. So I don't, do not have a response back from the attorney yet, but I will get it to the city as soon as possible, as soon as it's received, because I do think that it is treading on that restraint of trade here in our own community, and I don't think it's fair, unless we're going to hold our businesses that have retail downtown open at nighttime. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. City Manager, could you clarify the five businesses that would be affected, and how that, I'll call it grandfather, what that would look like?
Right, so, the grandfather is, in Mr. Christman's case, and we talked about this, he's had a bank, and our bank is a service industry, so you could put a bank there all day long and not be restricted. Because he has a real estate office in there now, he could lease forever to a general office because he has one of the products. It's Blake Realty, Mike Blake has his property, DBA down south of, between Third and Second, they have their offices there. Arterra, that's there presently, and then Arterra's moving into Greens. Now, we didn't cut an exception for Greens, he got in before the ordinance was changed. That's kind of the impetus of a 5,000 square foot space on the first floor, that now is not an opportunity when it was retail and service before. So, and I just will say this, I won't, I'm taking off my city manager hat, putting on my economic development hat, because that's still slash in my title. The city went all in when Mr. Christman was trying to lease his building before, there was a gap of many years that, when the parking exempt district went away, it was $12,500 to get a parking spot. Nobody paid for that. You couldn't afford to. It limited the owners of the properties opportunities for different retail uses or restaurants or an upgrade from general office. The cities went all in and dropped to $1,000. We've seen seven new businesses come in, because it's affordable now, and it's encouraging that. We've never allowed, to Council Peterson's point, it's not picking on an industry, it's called general office. We have never allowed, ever, 50 years, apartments on the first floor. That was written into the ordinance, stands up in court, upper story apartments only. You could call that, that you restricted somebody from that, because they didn't want that on the first floor, they want retail. Town after town after town has this exact same language in their zoning ordinances, because they're not saying, they're just saying you can't be on the first floor in a certain area, but you can be in the town. All the side streets, everything else in town, all our office buildings, office can go there. The number one complaint I hear from economic development is, I can't find a retail space. And when you start taking 5,000 square foot chunks of that to put a general office, that the argument is during the day, people will come in, et cetera, and shop, and that's how the salons and the barbers and stuff, they bring people in during the day. If somebody's open during the day for retail or restaurants, that's great, but we're more driven in the evening by the restaurants, right? So you're seeing our new brand of retailer, Spice &amp; Tea, for instance, they're open. The Roxy's going to be open, we're pushing, look at the distillery we just talked about. So that next generation people come into town, get that, maybe they won't open till noon, but they'll stay open till nine or 10 o'clock at night. So we have that constant conversation with PSD Board, with the DDA Board, with the Business Development Group. So I respectfully disagree that this is hampering anybody. Again, the people that have those spaces can do it forever, we're not stopping them from doing it, but we're encouraging retail and service industries on the first floor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nick. So for my thoughts on this, if you would have asked me five years ago about this, I would have said, I don't know about that. I don't want to restrict a property owner, I don't want to restrict a business owner from what they can do in their property. But I've talked to business owners, I've talked to property owners, I've actually studied other, what I would call thriving downtowns, and they do have ordinances that limit uses on Main Street. So I do support this ordinance as it's written.
Councilmember Albrecht.
This question's either for Nick or Mr. Christman, and thank you for being a longstanding landlord. 436, I think, is Morley Candy. 438 and 440, 440 is the real estate. What's 438?
438 is a foyer leading up the upstairs.
Yeah, to the upstairs.
Oh, okay, because I was Googling it here, and I couldn't find anything. So really what we're talking about is the 440 building, and as you mentioned to Mayor Protem's question, that's one of the five protected or grandfathered spaces. So Mr. Christman, if the real estate company leaves tomorrow, can put in another non-retail-focused place?
So in other words.
Could you come up to the, come up to the mic?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
If I lose my real estate office, and another, let's say attorneys wanted to rent it, I could do that?
Yes, sir.
Well, I didn't understand that.
I was trying.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
I'm sorry, now that's a little bit of a selfish point of view, but that does relieve my concern.
It's your building.
However, I don't, I still don't think it's right to do this, but I appreciate getting that clarified.
But in theory, if you rented it to a retail place for two years.
Correct, you couldn't go back.
Then you would lose that, and you couldn't go, is that correct?
Correct.
Then you couldn't go back.
My problem is, it's a big, huge space.
Right, I get it.
And retailers don't want that much space.
Right, so you don't.
That's number one. Number two, we spent a fortune configuring it for office use, kind of like Greens is doing now. And so to tear all that out, divide it somehow, would be a huge expense for us. And I thought that if I lost, because I've lost tenants, come and go. If I lose this real estate company, I'm going to be in deep trouble. But if I have the freedom to lease to another office configuration.
You do.
It greatly relieves me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to disagree, because residential on the main floor, you wouldn't have had that anyhow, so that's been out of, no one's ever had that on the main floor. But I will take, the city of Naples has their main Fifth Avenue is real estate everywhere, and it's because you have the walkable traffic, you have people in there, you have people there, at nighttime, they let people in. I mean, they are not restricting that in one of the highest cost of, you know, doing business in the country. I do think it's still a slippery slope, whether or not, he, he shouldn't, nobody who owns a building should be restricted of what type of use there is if we are not looking at it from across the board with, with hair salons and everything else, and also the Greens building. Let's go back, if we really care about economic development, we should have really pushed back in the day to get rid of that parking dollar for those parking spots because we would have had a nice restaurant sitting in there 10 times over in the Greens building. I mean, those buildings and the other building were waiting and no business, no realis, I'm sorry, no restaurant business could go in there because of the cost of parking. I mean, so, I mean, why are we, I mean, we have to really have a session where we really sit and talk about how we really want to see our downtown instead of just having an ordinance drawn up and then expecting us to make changes when, are we really thinking it out with, especially with what we want to do with the downtown, with the porch project or the town square and all these other developers coming in? How do they really feel? Because that's not, it's only on Main Street right there, but everything else on Main Street is closed. So it's, there's not a fairness here.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes. You know, it is difficult to weigh these decisions out, but when I think of downtowns and Main Streets over the years, being on the DDA, trying to remain competitive with malls, they can, they can, they're private property, you, they can give you any type of restrictions and that's why it's hard to compete with them, just like the Village of Rochester Hills, they say you sign this lease, you stay open till nine o'clock, you're open seven days a week. But we don't have that luxury. So when my, when I, I didn't even think about that, the fact that, you know, whether you have office or retail on the first floor until all of a sudden Greens, and that's what we keep bringing up, is 5,000 square feet of office space. And if that gets a little bit out of control, it's already, you know, it could, and that could definitely imbalance, that would become a imbalance if we don't do something about it and do what other towns have done. And that's what I always use as benchmarks. So I am for this and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the way the ordinance is amended, it does provide provision for the five existing properties that can remain non-conforming. They also have the opportunity to go to retail. So I don't see this as a big burden or restraint of trade. So I will make a motion to move this ordinance amendment to first reading and introduction.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, supported by Mayor Protem Salvia. Discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, and to Councilmember Sage's comment, you know, you don't, a real estate company doesn't just come in and then leave. We have, Century 21 is still there after all these years, and I've been here 37 in the, in the same building. We have all the other ones that were downtown that actually moved into and built other buildings here in downtown, and you have others. This is, this is really about restraint of trade for one industry, and you can't just, you're not going to just up and leave and turn it into a retail, you have to sell your building. These people bought their buildings to have that, most, all of them did. So now you're telling anyone who comes in here and buys your building, who's, what's next? What are we going to restrict next? I mean, I think it's, I think it's wrong that it is going to move forward like this. I will not, I will not be voting for this at all. I have been opposed to this change from the beginning, and as soon as I receive the information from the state of Michigan, I will be submitting it to the city.
Yeah, just for the record, it's not real estate offices, it's general office. It could be medical doctors, it could be anything, it's not Realtors, that's.
No, the ones you mentioned are real estate offices.
They happen to be Realtors now, but they're general offices, so.
They own the buildings. This is where, if you had, all these were rentals on the main floor and you wanted to restrict it from that sense, I could understand how you want to restrict that because of the turnover. You're not going to receive turnover, these are, they bought the building for a reason to do business.
No, I disagree. DBA is nothing, it's not a Realtor and they own the building, they, they do marketing. The bank was in the building, so.
There's real estate offices inside that building.
Upstairs, right. But not, I know, and they're okay there, but they're, the only one that bought the building, actually even Vito Terratucci that bought Greens, he's, it's a little, it's a workspace in some way, he's not even taking the whole space, but it's general office, so it, this is nothing to do with the real estate industry, just I want to make sure everybody knows that, it's a general office.
Well, it's very clear that it's not clear about that. And downtown Birmingham has two amazing workspaces, just like the one that they're going to put in there, that they get high dollar for the people who come in and rent it. And also, they're all paying the same amount in tax, correct? So it's not like there's a different tax that you get to pay if your office downtown, correct?
Different taxes?
Well, from, you're in the DDA, you're in the PSD, any of that, any additional difference in taxes? Okay.
Anything further? So I'd just like to say, this is actually my third time voting on this, because I'm on the DDA and it was unanimously passed, I'm on the Planning Commission, which it unanimously passed. And I believe, a little bit like Mayor Protem, probably years ago, I would, had a very difficult vote on this, but one, there's city after city after city, you have excellent downtowns do this, and it's been on the books for years that we do say you can't have first floor apartments. So it's not like we haven't ever done this, we have.
This isn't about residential though, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
We restrict residential on the first floor. That's a restriction, that's a, you know, you could argue that's a restraint of trade as well. So I will support this, and I certainly understand Mr. Christman's statement, but I think this is for the good of the downtown. So Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for coming in, Mr. Christman.
Thank you.
Next is a legislative deliberation, it's consideration of an ordinance amendment to the city code, chapter 54, utilities, article two, water supply and sewage treatment system, division two, general regulations, section 54 dash 264, cross connections, second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by the Mayor Protem. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a request to schedule a public hearing for May 8, 2023, for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, article 21, supplementary district regulations, section 2115, special projects approval standards, to clarify the applicability of special projects boundary area. Mr. City Manager, would you like to explain that to the public?
Yes, so.
Or Mr. City Attorney?
I'll turn over Jeff in a second, but we, so in doing the master plan revision, and a couple of developers have come in looking for areas that in their research, the zoning map, the master plan showed that they're in a special project area, we went through this discussion with the Planning Commission and City Council at a joint meeting, and we found a couple instances where they call them Scribner's errors, that actual parcels have been split by special projects boundary. Makes it virtually impossible to do that district. So what we made sure is instead of, we, we had the discussion, I know at council that Mr. Jackson from McKenna, our planner, said, other communities make the whole city a special project. And, which means you don't have to follow zoning, you don't have to follow any rules. Basically, you go to the Planning Commission and ultimately City Council and try to make a project that both parties can live with, the developers and the, the community. We thought that was a stretch at this point in time because we have things that are very touchy, the administration building, the SolarOnics building, Suave's property, a couple of them, we like the underlying zoning, we'll deal with those with, of traditional rezoning requests. If someone really feels strongly to build something, come in and rezonate, look at our master plan and we'll work together on that. But we need to fix this and give the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council with the developers the chance to modify a line to take in a property. You can't create a new special project on your own here. We want to make that very clear. This can only be contiguous to a non-residential district. So for instance, the elevator, that we cut their property in two-thirds, which, then nobody knew it. We, we didn't catch it in 14 or 22 in our master plan, so there's two ways to fix that, go back to the master plan and rewrite all the PICA districts, the special project districts, or we worked through Attorney Crot, we found a way that the reference from the zoning ordinance to how we get to a special project can be fixed with this language. So we would look forward to doing that. And again, every project has to come back to the Planning Commission, sell their case, meet all the standards that we put in place that are safeguards, so it's not a free ticket, and then to this body to be approved. So it goes through two public hearings, multitude of work, and it just is fixing some of these errors that people's properties, talk about property rights, they can't develop their same property in the same way because they have two different zoning classifications or not the ability to do a special project. So that's what this is all about.
Motion to approve.
Well, a motion to set public hearing.
Yep.
Yeah, public hearing.
So a motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. I'll just say that the Planning Commission also took a look at this and approved this, or was in favor of this. Further discussion? Councilmember Trent.
Are there like, is this sort of blanket, or is there, like, you've talked about the elevator and we saw that, but are there two or three, are places, or what, I mean, this came up because these problems arose, are there more than that?
Anybody that's non-industrial, anybody that's non-residential could ask to amend their, their property to a special project to get it right, so it's not just one, it could be anybody that is in this condition.
I see. So does it mean that you're just cutting out meetings, like, you're cutting, like, this cuts out, looks like, you said, a lengthy and involved process, that it cuts out more meetings with planning?
If we wanted to fix everything at once, we'd have to go back to the master plan, go through that, take a year and do that.
Go through the master plan.
Correct.
I see.
To make a, the entire city a special project zone, it would take a year, year and a half.
Yeah.
I'm not for that, so, okay. No, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think at the last Planning Commission, we also talked about a deliverable being that we would look at the master plan zoning with an overlay.
Correct.
Placed on top of that of the current special project zones, correct?
Yes, thank you for that. So right now, it's really, someone, the Planning Commission noticed, I think it might have been Chairman McGee, that, where do you find this? So if you looked at your, normal developers will call me, the developer guy, come in and we work through this, but if you just opened a zoning ordinance, you wouldn't see this, it's, there isn't a overlay zone. Many communities meld them together, Councilman Sage is saying, so we committed that we will, as we're going through every single district now, Planning Commission is, they're coming to City Council, every time we get to a district, we're going to make sure on the map, it shows it's in the PICO or not. So we'll have two reference points now, in the master plan and as an overlay zone on the zoning ordinance. So we will correct that as we're going through the process. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. And then, and if just, and if anybody asks, this does not affect the SolarOnics property code?
Correct.
Because that property is not adjacent.
Nor the administration building.
Nor the administration.
So those two properties that are more controversial are not affected by that. Councilmember Trent.
Yes, so one last question. So we still haven't codified the last master plan, so does this put the cart before the horse, or is the horse?
So the master plan has been codified, approved, it's good to go, but now, so that's set to go, but we haven't implemented the master plan, which is the zoning classification. So that's what we're going through, one by one. We did the first three with PC.
Yeah, I see. Okay.
Good question. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a request to schedule a public hearing for May 8, 2023, for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, article 28, screen walls and woodlands protection, section 2807, dumpster and trash storage enclosures, to amend the language regarding trash enclosure, enclosure materials. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. So this sounds kind of not sexy, and it's not sexy, but the Planning Commission was running into this situation, especially our city planner, Vidya Krishnan. I tell the story that I remember the day I came in to talk to the town about coming to work here, I came down the hill and on the right side at the collision shop, I saw a dumpster sitting in the middle of the parking lot. And then I drove another block and I saw a dumpster in the middle of the parking lot. Where I came from in Southfield, I was in charge of dumpster stuff, part of my, my job as city planner, and we took that very serious. Every single dumpster had an enclosure and it was put in and had gates and poles around. And I was shocked because Mr. Johnson was such a snickler about stuff like that in town, but come to find out, these were here for 30 years and they're all grandfathered in, even though our ordinance said that you had to have an enclosure. So Chief and I made it a priority together for the last 14 years, that when we get an opportunity to either ask for a change of use and someone's got a dumpster that's sitting in the middle of nowhere, we tell them, here's our ordinance, you have to put an enclosure, et cetera. The ordinance as written back in the day was you will put a masonry enclosure around the building, two, three cement bollards inside and gates. So Community House was a good example, we had a dumpster there, but it had a fence around it. Ra-Ra's old building had a fence around it. The Spartan Inn had a fence around it. In some cases, you want the enclosure to match the building, in some cases you don't because it's in the back parking lot in the back 40, and chances are a broken, somebody hits that masonry wall, it's going to be in rubble and we end up having different problems. So we simply wanted the opportunity to allow the Planning Commission or administration, when we negotiate with the property owner, the dumpster enclosures, to use other materials than just masonry. And we got total support from the business community and we will still require an enclosure, but it might be vinyl link fencing, if that's appropriate in an industrial building, it might be masonry, it might be brick still. In the case of Spartan Inn, it's ended up being a masonry with brick on it because that's what would match the building. The places at Forest Ridge, he wanted brick around his because it would match his building. So it just opens the door so Vidya doesn't have to write a, you have to put a masonry product up when it makes no sense whatsoever. So that's all this is.
Councilmember Gould.
Thank you. Is, so there is an approval process for whatever they're going to put around it?
Correct.
They can't use like hurricane fencing or anything like that?
Correct, so it's still got to go through, if there's an existing one, administration, and then we show them the same standards, if it goes to Planning Commission, they have to prove to the Planning Commission why they're using something other than the product. Thank you.
It's just, it's just really a way for, give them a little more flexibility.
Correct.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I always hear the mayor at the ribbon cutting saying, we're a business friendly community, and I think this is an example of us being a business friendly community in that we are giving the businesses an ability to match the materials. And to Councilmember Gould's part, I like the fact that it still has to come before the Planning Commission because I don't like slippery slopes, and, and this could be a slippery slope if there was not a check and balance that's built into this, so I would support this.
Is it a motion?
I'll make a motion to move this to.
Set public hearing.
Public hearing, set public hearing.
Support.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, supported by Councilmember Gould, discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So I just want to add that in the city of Boston, they put murals on their dumpsters, so they look, the enclosures, and they look really awesome.
And you couldn't do that here at present.
No, we'd have flexibility.
It would be graffiti on masonry.
No, but they actually do beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor?
Councilmember Albrecht.
To Councilmember Peterson's point, when I was in Boston last week, they also paint the utility boxes, they, they, they get every, every piece of public, you know, the cable boxes, the telephone boxes, and, and they commission artists and it's, it's gorgeous. It's just gorgeous.
So in the budget that was presented tonight, there's that $20,000 line item, that's[1693.61] So in the budget that was presented tonight, there's that $20,000 line item, that's what it's for, all the utility boxes in town, because we're getting graffiti hit hard. So you could exactly cover them up with real art.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, just one clarification. Someone said that it has to go to Planning Commission. What we did, that's going to be the most case, but one of the things that the fire chief was dealing with is people who weren't coming to Planning Commission for a site plan approval, there's really no trigger for them to have to put a, an enclosure around for those that have been there forever. So one of the tools that the fire chief said, hey, any chance we can get, give something, some power to the building official, because something's better than nothing. And so that's where the, that's where you'll see in here, that the building official may approve alternative materials for properties that aren't coming before Planning Commission. Obviously, if it's a site plan that's going to go there, the building official is not involved, it's Planning Commission takes care of it. But on those ones that the, the chief ups the politeness and suggests that they can, they should put an enclosure around, that also gives the flexibility to, to the building official to do that. So as long as all the other requirements for the enclosure are met, it's not a wild west, it's just the materials that would be, the building official would be able to do.
Mayor Protem, Salvia?
And, and to further clarify that, I believe it's, it's the building official and the city manager. It's two.
Yep.
Because I like that check and balance. That's what I learned at the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and what actually happens is that the building official has to have, not, so this is my planning side, the planner has to sign off, not necessarily the city manager, but, so the, it's, we have three checks. We have DPW checks set to make sure if we need a sewer under, sorry, a drain underneath it with a swirl chamber because it potentially has grease in it, they check off, then planning checks off to make sure it's appropriate materials, then the building official will do that. Yep, so we got triple coverage.
Any questions, discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a resolution observing National Gun Awareness Month in June. Council. Councilmember Albrecht?
I know we've done this every year, over the last several years, and I, I know we're passionate about this, and I would make a motion to approve this resolution with Gun Awareness Day. In the previous consent agenda, we also had the orange ribbons that are going to be on the, on the street lamps, so, and I had asked the city manager and the police chief to make sure that the facts and the resolution were all accurate this year, so we could all get behind this. So I make a motion to approve the resolution for Gun Awareness Day.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Sage, discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to ask the maker of the motion for a friendly amendment to this. And the friendly amendment is, whereas gun violence has struck closer to home with recent events at Rochester State University, whereas the Rochester City Council designates the month of June as the National Gun Awareness Month.
I, I think that's a great addition. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson.
This is the second, second.
Support.
Support.
And that, if I may, Mayor, and that is because I feel that if we're going to do that, we should make it personal to what we have had to experience here, and I think that then that resolution means something to all of us. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next are reports on regular business versus a receipt of the check register reports. Any questions on that? Next is consideration of building official employment agreement renewal. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Speaking of the building official, I'm Randy McClure, it's our building official. He took over for our retiring Sid Brown. Believe it or not, it's coming up on three years. And Randy's been an amazing find. We seconded that team with Rose McKinney, who retired from Frazier and came here, and those two have not missed a beat. They are the best team members here, and Randy's done an incredible job managing the trades. So he's in charge of the plumbing, heating and cooling, electrical inspectors, he's the building inspector and building official and plan reviewer. So Randy's contract was, is up June 1st, I wanted to get ahead of it a little bit. No changes, basically, it's another three-year extension. I talked him into staying at least three more years, hopefully. And it's a 3% raise, I believe, which is standard for the next three years. And we love having him here, and basically, that's the contract. It was expiring and I just wanted to make sure that I got this on time. If you have questions, he offered to come tonight, I said, he was on vacation, but it's, I said, if we have any questions, we can postpone this, have you here, Randy. But he's got nothing but rave reviews from the business community, the residential community. He drives a little electric car, he works Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And if you see in the contract, this is not anything new. The way we set it up was to get him here, he paid, took a salary. When Sid was here, it was hourly, and you never really knew how, how that was going to work out by the end of the year. So when we went to the standard industry back three years ago, this is what we found, which is, was a little scary. All the inspectors, other than the building official and building inspector, get, whenever the fees come in, they get 60%, some are 55, 60%. And all the communities in Southeast Michigan, they get that fee.
Over a certain amount?
No. In most communities, that is when the fee comes in, whatever it is, they get that. When Randy came here, obviously, that was going to be the ask. And we looked at these giant projects that are coming in and thought, you can make a million dollars in a year if we do that. So we set a baseline of $200,000. So the first $200,000, he's paid on his salary. Then anything over $200,000 at the end of a calendar year, then he would get 50% of that. So we're way ahead, and he agreed to do that, and has continued to agree to do that in the next three years. So, yeah, it could have been, we anticipate some pretty big projects and it will give him a little push if we get that way, but you have to do the work and, and et cetera. But other communities, there is no minimum, it's just they get 60%. It's like, that's, that's pretty scary. So I'm asking for council to approve his contract for a three-year extension starting, I believe it's June 21st.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you. So for city manager then, is that 3%? What, what is that on the actual basis?
Yeah.
Okay, just the base?
Correct.
None of the other bonus or any of that?
Nope, just 3%. And actually, I talked to Randy about that. I said, we're in union contracts and everything's going to come up, and we don't know where we're going to land, but in the budget we had built, in our three-year budget for the last three years, we've been building about 3%. So I said to Randy, if you want something in here that says if somehow more is paid to the employees, that you would follow suit. And he said, he's good with what, just knowing that he's got a steady no for the next three years, he was okay with that.
One other follow-up?
Follow-up.
Thank you. So then, when the whole work, the pay program that we put together and that, was he already brought up to speed with that?
No, so we, no, he didn't ask to be part of that, and we felt his salary at the time was appropriate. And again, he had his opportunity here and he's good with what it is, so he just took nothing, the base never went up, it was just 3% off of that base from three years ago. Good question.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Just a procedural question. Do we really have to approve, is this for more for transparency, Nick, or is this at your, you're, you're able to just approve these contracts? I just, I know we do certain positions, so I just didn't want to understand why this was coming before us.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, so unlike most employees, this is a contract situation. So, you know, Nick did ask me that very question, and so I, I've always fallen the side of city council should approve contracts. This is not just an internal raise that you've budgeted for, this is an actual contract. It's for three years, and I'll also say, there's also a possibility for an additional one-year term that was baked in here, and the commencement date is July 1, just, so with your fiscal year. So that, I, I felt more comfortable with it coming to city council because it's an actual contract, and either side could get out, so don't let the three years, Randy, if he wanted to put in his notice, that's fine. This doesn't take it away from being a, an at-will situation. It's, I think it's 90 days is what the city would have to give him. So it's not an, I mean, it's more of an at-will, but it's memorialized, unlike many of the other employees.
So to follow on, do we need a motion to approve this? Is that your, okay, then I'll make the motion to renew the building official, Randy McClure's contract as presented by city manager Nick Banda.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson, discussion. Madam Clerk, the role.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is update to the city of Rochester, Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan. Miss?
Good evening, everyone.
Resource Director, welcome.
Council. I'm here just to answer any questions. I tried to put this on consent, but I figured you might pull it anyway. Don't let the size fool you, okay? It's really some very minor changes. It was, the plan that we have on our website is 10 years old, so it needed updating not only from a city manager standpoint, but also from the census data, and I, I put in a new organization chart as well. So it was really to clean it up, and because I have not gone through this process yet with the city, I conferred with our attorney, Crot, and he gave me a few suggestions, and I also called the DOT compliance officer, and I made sure that my census data was exactly the way they wanted it, he walked me through it. And the good news is, the one thing that they're really particular about, this is in granting any kind of contracts to the city for major roads, is that, and to get the federal funding, is that we have, we're compliant in terms of our language efficiency, in terms of how many people in these societies speak English on a regular basis. So the, the, I'm trying to think of what the word is for, but the threshold is 5%. And in the one chart that was, that they're very particular about, the city of Rochester came in with a population that speaks English less than very well at 3.2%. So he said, you're okay, you don't need to have this language efficiency or limited efficiency, limited English proficiency program. So if it was over 5%, we would have to do something additional on our website as well. So one of the suggestions that, that he made for us was that you can put on your website, like a Google Translate, it's a button that you hit, and it translates everything immediately to another language. So it's a real handy tool to have, and I'm looking into that as well, but this is really just to be compliant for those requirements, but it's also a good thing overall for the community. Do you have any questions?
Mayor Protem, Salvia?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, you know, specifically the, the chart, the census data that's on page 17 or 123 in our packet. Question I had was, so you're saying there's no language changes in here? There's, you know, I was kind of looking for the redline version of any words specifically you had changed, other than the city manager name. You changed no other words?
No, the only thing that they had asked me to update was the census data, and they also asked me to put in a new organization chart. There were a few other, and I ran them by attorney Crot, there were a few just minor wording changes that had nothing to the substance and value of it, that I had found in our, I think we had tried to review it a few years before the city manager left, and that project just never went anywhere. So there were a few just minor corrections in terms of, it wasn't in any content at all, it was just some minor things that the old document had that the other one didn't. But if you would like a redline version, I could do that.
I, I do still have, we, we did talk about whether, you know, that, I mean, because there weren't that substantial, but there were some changes to it. So I do, I do still have a redline version that will capture most of it. I know Joe on put in the org chart that wouldn't be redlined because I didn't have that information, the census. But is that, other than the org chart and the census information, I think I can give you, just send around the, the redline change with the other language, if that's helpful?
Yep. DOT also, they, it was, it was interesting because the, the compliance officer asked me if, if I needed a, like a template. I said, sure, send me whatever one you have, and I compared it, and it was, it was exactly what we have. So whoever did it before 10 years ago, it's the same, and so, yeah, we can certainly provide that to you if you'd like, so.
Councilmember Albrecht?
This is why my 40-some years in HR makes my head spin, but this is for either Joe Ellen or attorney Crot. On page 32 of the document, 138 of the packet, it lists the areas for alleged discrimination, and with all the applications for employment I've been doing lately for some of my clients, I know that there are more than the ones listed there that are now protected by the EEOC. So was that looked at, attorney Crot or Joe Ellen? We have race, color, age, disability, religion, national origin, sex and income, and I know there's a few others, but if I Google them, I could, you know, so.
I'll, I'll take that. So Joe Ellen was correct that when I did this before, or helped a former city manager, I don't think those decisions had been made, so I, I think that's a fair, a fair request for us to include, because those are just recently done, so maybe I'll, I'll get with you in the city council.
I can send you the list tomorrow.
Thank, that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay.
I, I know our labor attorney also, we actually did some training citywide for this for all of our employees, and, and there were several more. Now, I'm not sure what, I'll have to compare it with the new one that they sent me. If they updated it, I, I would hesitate to think that it's, that they may have it, but we can certainly include that, that would be something that, as well. And, and on page 32, that is the, the actual complaint form that they would fill out. So it doesn't say these are the only things, it's just, these are the top things that, that they would make a complaint about, but it, it would certainly not hurt to include more, so that they're more.
I'd rather have it up to date to EEOC guidelines, especially since you said we hadn't looked at this in 10 years, so let's just put out the, the best version we can. So I'll send that to you and the attorney tomorrow morning.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. Mayor?
Mayor Protem?
So, so do we need a motion to table this, or can we just bring it back?
You, you don't need a, a motion to, to table. We can bring it back, or you can approve it with those added, either, either choice.
Council?
I, I guess I'd like to make a, a motion to table it and bring it back with those, those discussion items, the redline and the updated classifications.
Support.
Absolutely.
Do we have a motion to, before? Let me just table, do we have to have a motion to table?
That is our choice.
It's your choice.
Motion, motion by Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
See you next time. Next is consideration of the replacement of the asphalt pathway in the municipal park with a new concrete path. City manager or Mr. DPW director, whichever?
I got a few, yeah, so, council, if you've walked around the pond, you know, being between two watercourses, that asphalt pavement's had a rough go over the years, so Alec and Jason went out and thought the right thing to do now, since we're doing these past the ADA compliances, get them 10 feet wide, concrete's going to hold up a lot better there. So they went out and got three bids, and we're making a recommendation today to take the lowest bid, which was ResCom at $40,625.
This will also give the chance to address a little bit of drainage grading issues along that path as well.
Good.
the lowest bid, which was ResCom at forty thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
This will also give the chance to address a little bit of drainage grading issues along that path as well.
Good.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, so, I'll make a motion to approve, however, I have a, a question regarding, I've been noticing in other communities, I think I brought it up to you, that once we, new concrete is laid, you're not salting it, so are we going to have any alternatives? I mean, are we going to take that initiative too and not salt the new concrete until it can actually cure? A lot of communities are doing that because they have new concrete roads and they posted signs everywhere that, no, this will not be salted due to it's being new.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think a pathway is a bit different than the path, than the road would be and with this being done earlier in the summer, you know, it gives it more time for it to cure over the summer as opposed to a road being done maybe in the fall with large trucks and whatnot going over and possibly damaging or cracking it, but we can look into that as a, as a, as an adjustment to our operations.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be a waste.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Trent.
Speaking of salt, isn't there alternatives to salting?
Right.
There's some kind of new materials?
There are, yes.
I don't know if they're more, they're probably more expensive, but they're, I don't know.
Different options range in price and effectiveness.
We don't need lime billy.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
I'll support that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Mayor Protem Salvia. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Just so Council and all, Mayor, that we're going to work around events, so it's going to be a pretty quick dig out, we know when we need that section and we're aware of that, so we'll make it a short window that we do this.
I think after this one, we've only got maybe one or two other sections left to go in the park and then a brand-new park pretty much, so.
Thank you.
They'll look great.
Next is a review of the two thousand twenty-two annual liquor license report. Chief?
Last hurrah.
Chief, the days are waning.
Don't say that, don't.
Isn't this your favorite report, chief?
Yeah.
We enjoy reading it.
Well, good, good. Yes, this is our annual liquor license inspection report. We visit all of the establishments that serve liquor by the glass. We do a number of things, we want to make sure that we check the, and we work with the building official as well to go through and make sure that all liquor law license types of issues are taken care of, licenses are properly posted and things of that nature, and as well as the life safety issues there to make sure that there's no problems. So, we're checking for exit lights, fire extinguishers, things of that nature. Most of the problems that we find year after year now, after doing this so long, have been minor in nature, battery here or there that, to correct lighting issues, whether it be exits or emergency lights. So, nothing of, of great hazard is found and I think it's, you know, been beneficial to ensure the safety of those visitors to those establishments to do that. We also look at taxes, make sure the taxes are up to date and then probably the best part is we go through and look at all the activity and compare that year to year. We don't see anything necessarily glaring out of any one establishment. We see some upticks in a couple of establishments, but I think coming out of COVID, we kind of expected to see some return in activity. So, I certainly stand ready to answer any questions that you may have in reference to the report.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I want to compliment Chief that he took the, on his own, he took the wherewithal to take LT out there with him because he's been the one who's done this for fifteen years and to show, share that knowledge with someone else on staff so they would know what would happen when Chief's gone and, and took him out on the inspections with him and Randy, so I appreciate him doing that, so.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. Question I have probably for city manager, I noticed the one entity that is not current on taxes has been empty for quite some time. Have we had any discussions with this building owner, are they planning to use the building? It's been empty.
I assume it's Chapman House?
Yes.
I talked to Mr. Danzig about three months ago. I tried a different tactic, I've talked to him once a year, say, hey, my son's getting married, they would love to use your restaurant as a special event, thought that might open the door, no thanks, so. Jeff, his standard answer is, I'm looking at a new concept, I'm not going to come back until I get it right. He paces.
Well, he's not current.
Yeah, he lets it, he lets it go to the very end and then someone else comes in and pays him for him basically, so he, he will, will not commit to what might happen there. And we've had, I've sent numerous folks there to see if they could purchase it from him, someone actually wanted to buy it as a house again and turned it back into the Chapman House and offered him a lot of money, but he's, there's something there that he will not commit to anything at this point. I do reach out to him every six months.
Councilmember Albert.
Chief, as you look at the report, there's one establishment that's almost doubled from last year and back to even ahead of pre-COVID levels. I know that sometimes if you have too many alarms go off at your house, you get, you have to start paying for that for false alarms. Is there anything we can do using our term of turning up the politeness or having them put in some additional security measures so your people aren't there as often as you have to be?
Yeah, I mean, I know you're talking about Main Street Billiards, it's a very responsible owner, we have talked with him about that. One of the other things to look at is, is what are the numbers? So, like there's a, a great uptick in customer trouble complaints, which tells me that they're calling us before there's a problem rather than us getting there and there's a fight that's broken out or something like that. So, as I said, they, they are, he spends a lot of money on security and there's a benefit to that, it translates into some causing or solving some problems, you know, keeping small problems small before they become larger, so it is obviously something that's on our radar to watch.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you, that answers my concern on that one establishment. There's one at the end of the report though that really surprised me was the hotel with regard, any idea there or was it?
Well, again, it's the same kind of thing, you have to look at what are the nature of the, of the complaints, you know, we serve, it's a large hotel, we, you know, and there's a lot of calls there for extra patrol as an example, so there's a lot of reasons for, I guess, I caution people to make sure you look at each of the numbers rather than the total because the, the total is very hard to represent, you know, one establishment to another whether there's a problem or not.
Okay. Further questions? Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we receive a report from the various boards and commissions, Planning Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, at the Planning Commission, we conducted five public hearings, two of those we discussed here tonight, the special project and the dumpster and trash storage enclosures, both were approved and sent here for consideration, which has now resulted in public hearings of our own for adoption. We considered a site plan for the Brown Iron Brewery and a special exception for parking in lieu of four spaces. The site plan was approved, the parking in lieu, I believe, will come before this body next meeting?
Okay.
For those four spaces.
Under four, they hit, remember under ten, they just have to pay it, so that won't come, it's the Roxy that's going, the Roxy's the one that's going to come.
Okay. We also considered a special exception for parking in lieu of another four spaces for bitter toms on Main Street and that one will also be paid and will not have to come before this body. The final site plan we reviewed was for the Downtown Inn, which was approved with amendments for some adjustment to the circular driveway, fencing, the lighting, some landscaping and irrigation and the establishment of a crosswalk there at the side of the building across the street to assist in directing pedestrian flow and finally installing some handicap We also considered two preliminary site reviews, one for Blake's Realty for an exterior facade renovation, the public hearing for that will be scheduled for May, May meeting. And then Eleon Maine considered a preliminary site review to demolish an existing single-story building and build a new two-story office building. That too will be up for a public hearing in May.
And that's the building right next door to Morgan Stanley, right across Highland, which building looked pretty beautiful, yes.
Just tear it down.
Thank you, Councilmember Sage. Councilmember Trent, you were going to deliver a report on the Budget Committee?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, every month, we have now added a meet and greet with department heads and employees and this last time we got to meet the Clerks Department and that consists of Leanne O'Connor, the city clerk, who's sitting down there at the end of the dais here, and Brian Dienzio, Dienzio, the deputy clerk, yeah. So, a little bit about them, good thing that Brian loves election season because he said that's his favorite time, he, he's good with people and he has a calming demeanor and he's been going to the Clerks Institute to improve his skills. His favorite part of working here is the community of coworkers who genuinely help our residents with patience and kindness, that's his calming demeanor. He, when he's not working, he enjoys hobbies that involve music, watching football and painting, and that's oil painting, not, you know, painting houses. And Leo, Leanne O'Connor has had a forty-one, total of forty-one years as city clerk services and twenty-two years in Rochester. She graduated from Rochester High School, she's a team player and she's like the Nancy Drew of solving problems and finding solutions to difficult issues, so that's really good. And in her spare time, she enjoys crocheting, going for walks and reading and her favorite time of year is fall when football begins and Thanksgiving is her favorite holiday for football, food and it always makes the end, marks the end of the season. So, on to the budget, so the finance, there's that and then there's her budget, a little, little important part of this, quite a big important part. The finance department presented the, and are fine tuning the final budget that will have, that will be balanced with some surplus, which is good news. They're working on streamlining efficiencies with consulting services and products that those are the, the things that takes to run a city and they're also rightsizing and backfilling jobs if they don't need to be filled or replaced by the, a job description, so they realign the job's description to fill the job and they also look at costs so they can save money there as well and still give the same services. So, for the grant updates, they're being proactive and everyone is on the same page, they're all looking, all the staff has got their walking orders to look for grants under every stone and they're shaking every tree and so, that's it and hopefully we'll get more grants.
Very good. Next is miscellaneous. Well, first, is there any other public comment? Brian, we're all good?
We are all set.
Very good. Brian does have a calm demeanor.
He does.
He does? Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian stepped in at the Plan Commission, calm demeanor, he's, he's very, he's quite professional, we love him. So, a couple of things, I got ahold of our new county commissioner as requested and he's going to come to the twenty-fourth meeting and he appreciated the invitation and he's going to come and give us an update on what's going on there. I had the privilege of speaking at, probably not their privilege, but mine, at the Rotary, I kind of probably overwhelmed them, Chief, I tried not to get, you know, he said I did it right, but I don't know, I was on a roll, so I got the cutoff at about an hour, like, okay, we get it, you guys are doing a lot of good stuff, so it was, it was fun to, to see those folks again, I was happy to do that. And then we had Leadership Rochester, so our, we take that very seriously, Maggie puts together a great group every single year, we send people, Alec is in our, this year's class for us and, and everybody tries to go through that project, so we have the government day here where we all sit up here and spend an hour and a half telling about what we do for a living, all the department heads and share that with the folks and, and more importantly, you get to start drawing out of these future leaders, like the importance of, we can't find people that want to go into government and my speech has always been, whether it's at elementary schools or junior highs or high school or college classes, that if you don't get involved in your community, you don't complain. I mean, you should need to be that next person, like it's on a board of commission, ultimately you could end up sitting here, I know how many of you started through that board of commission process to get to where you're at today, so had a great time with them and then, and I went over to Rochester Hills myself and Mayor Barnett and then the supervisor from Oakland, then they got to just free for all and ask us personal questions, whatever questions, that was about the most robust discussion I've had, it's a really good class. Alec kind of busted us all, but that's okay, so we'll pay him back later, but we had a good time and, and we're committed to that. Yeah, so we, yeah, so we're happy to spread the word, there's so much good going on in this town, you heard the Plan Commission agendas, they just keep coming. And again, tomorrow, I'm looking forward to spending time with our staff on the big picture stuff, this is, I've been waiting for this because there's a lot of dots on that map to draw and say, what happens if you do that, what do you do, need to do to do that, so it's, it's a good time to be working here, thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Watch your emails this week, I'm going to send council an update on three different items, the boards and commissions, all the applications and the updated lists for you to start considering and the nominations will be on your first meeting for May. Memorial Day, we're still working on a speaker, but for now, the information I have is our event at Mount Emma is going to be at eight AM, the event down at Rochester Hills is going to be at nine and then the parade is going to be at ten thirty. And I will also provide council an update on city council candidates, we currently have two, but I think at the end of this meeting, we might have three and then we have four outstanding packets, so I'll, I'll give you the names of, of those that we're waiting on, so that's all.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
I was just hoping that I could get an excused absence for missing the last meeting, I believe Councilmember Albrecht also missed it, so maybe we could both get one.
Motion for an excused absence for Councilmember Gould and Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Wish my Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Peterson, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Self-serving, yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yeah, so, speaking of grants, just wanted to give a little bit of a grant update. Thanks to Finance Director Maggio, we've identified a grant through the state of Michigan that we are working to apply for the Community House. It, what we've seen of the grant so far matches our project at the Community House to modernize and update and expand the Community House, so no timeline yet on that, but that is an opportunity. We're also working with Gary Peters' office, he has expressed some interest in grant funding for community centers, so we're going to be meeting with his office, hopefully in May, so working to get some grant money for the Community House. And then, other exciting news, I was invited to the soft open for Saint eighteen eighty-one, so I think they are finally going to open.
Excellent.
This week.
Councilmember Sage?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I'd like to thank Councilmember Gould for adding me into that motion, let me be clear, he was having a much more fun than I was, though I was at the Main Street Conference with the, the DDA team and a member from PSD and I was able to speak on the topic was working with elected officials to create vibrant downtown, so I think we saw a good example of that today in the presentation by, by both Ben Giovinelli, the chair, and Kristi Travarro, the, the executive director, so it was a, a good three days in Boston. I just wanted to give you an update following up on our city clerk, the Memorial Day Parade, which is a, a tri-region function with Rochester Hills, Oakland Township and ourselves, will kick off at ten thirty on Memorial Day that Monday. We have sponsorship opportunities and I just ask, I'm going to be reaching out to some businesses, we sort of had, we had a meeting earlier today and we sort of split up some of the businesses that could help sponsor this parade. We had money left over from last year and our goal is to, with these sponsorship opportunities, to make sure this, this parade is, continues on in perpetuity, so each year we want to finish the, the, the cost of the parade and have some money left over to have seed money for the next year, so Vito Papalona has already stepped up to be the parade presenting sponsor as he was last year, but there are opportunities at the Colonel level, a thousand dollar sponsorships, the major level at five hundred dollars, the captain level at two hundred and fifty and then a new one, Field Commander at eight hundred for a marching band, so we're, we hope that to get more participants than it was last year. Mayor and, and city council, we are going to have two cars, sort of like the city, the Christmas parade or the holiday parade, where the mayor's name will be on one car and then city council will be on another car, doesn't mean we have to ride in them, but we want to have more of a distinction of, of us as city council, Rochester Hills will be doing the same thing. Last year, if you remember, we were running tither and toe, passing out flags, so we're going to have Boy Scouts or other groups do that so we can, you know, march, march as a group along the parade route, so we'll, we'll figure out which cars we're going to use, whoever has the cleanest, nicest car that day will, 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 will bring them out there, so looking forward to the parade again this year, did I miss anything, Marilyn?
I don't think you did, Mark.
Okay, thanks, Mayor, that's it.
I think you got it all in.
All set?
Mark said it all.
Councilmember Trent, you good?
I'm good.
Councilmember Peterson?
All set, thank you.
Yeah, just two things, one, I'd like to thank the DPW for their very important task of getting the tennis courts on a timely basis, very, very efficient. And just a reminder that the state of the city is May tenth at the Community House, so we're getting that planned, city manager and I are working on things.
We'd like people to call in so we know, we have a capacity of two thirty, so we need to know, we'd like to just get, it doesn't cost anything, but our SVP so we know how many folks are coming.
So, without further ado, thank you, everybody. Mr. Police Chief?
Sorry, just a couple of announcements, there is still public comment at the end, right?
Well, I don't know, Chief.
What's your address? What's your address?
As I always say, Chief has a gun, right?
The jail downstairs.
Yeah.
Just a, a few announcements for this, some busy things that are happening in the police department, it's kind of an all sports weekend for the police department, we are involved in a basketball game on Saturday at three o'clock at Stony Creek High School, where we are playing versus the First Responders Tour, it's a group of youth who, as part of an incentive for them to keep their grades up, they have been going around and playing various police departments, it's something that could result in beating similar to gold trotters against the generals or something, but we'll see how that works out. Also, on Sunday, we have our annual Face Off Against Cancer, where we have our hockey folks will be out on the ice at the suburban ice or the former Onyx and they will be trying to raise money for New Day Foundation, which does great work with people and families that are fighting off cancer. We also, today and tomorrow, will be still accepting applications for the Citizens Police Academy, which will start on Thursday and run Thursday into June. And then we also, the last thing we have is, which is new this year, is a regional junior police academy. And there's some information on our Facebook page on how to apply for that, and that's for our youth. And we are partnering with Bloomfield Township Birmingham and Auburn Hills, which are the same agencies that were partnered together with Core, Mental Health Core Responder Program.